Hello, Elvis. It's great to see you.
Okay, I would like to start by saying Chiefs Kingdom, although I don't think any of us are Chiefs fan, but if you are, that's okay. And I would like to say a thank you to former mayor Gratazar for his service and congrats to Mayor Graham on her election. And I wish you nothing but the best and if everything succeeds with you as mayor and the city council, Pablo succeeds, no matter what party anybody is. I along with others would like to know how the exact cost of the runoff was, I need to get to this on my phone too. In the election, in Pueblo, we have over 200 liquor licenses and out of those, some are liquor stores where some of the unhoused linger over there and we have the no the ordinance for people who can't loiter, but that's not fully enforced. So that has to be looked at more. And with those that also could have those people there because they're addicted to alcohol. Alcoholism is a real addiction. People die from alcoholism. I had a grandfather who was an addict to alcohol and he died at 59 back in 2004. So that needs to be looked into more on that too. Because addiction is real. And alcohol is a depression drug also. And then along those lines, I know we have resources out there, but those are limited to those who are unhoused and for a variety of reasons. When I drive by Eighth and Ground, which I just did earlier to come on down here, most of the time wasn't tonight though. There are people just hanging out right there to get their cheap fix with legal alcohol. And I'm not calling for prohibition. That's not what I'm calling for. Just to help the people who are suffering from alcoholism. And then earlier today, I was watching part of the council retreat and some members brought up a potential of cutting our time to three minutes. I do not agree with that whatsoever because even if you don't like what anybody is saying here, you guys are open ears and I applaud you, Mr. Aliff, President Aliff, for what you said, although what people say, you guys may not agree, but to lower it isn't right. And Mr. Flores echoed those same exact words. And then it was also talked about at the work retreat that's online, but I was here for this part. You guys were talking about the marijuana grow tax and I just want to reference to the new council members. On December 26th, the ordinance number 10622 was passed by a four to two vote, amending section 14 dash two dash eight, decreasing the grow tax to zero percent for a period of three years. So therefore it cannot be brought back per ordinance for three consecutive years. And then with this whole vacancy that Ms. Dole was talking about earlier too, up to date, 23 people applied. But questions I have about it. What voting guides will council use when reviewing letters of intent and resumes? Or will it be based on any potential deals made via email or meeting between a council member and a potential appointment for the vacancy? To be fully transparent and straightforward with the vacancy on Pueblo City Council, no city council member should be voting for anyone who may be related to them, donated to any of their campaigns, helped work on any of the council members' campaigns, or vice versa. If any council member has worked with anybody that applied on any, if they ever ran for office, won or lost, they should recuse themselves from voting for he or she to be fully transparent. And also, if you have worked with any of the applicants at any job in Pueblo or out of Pueblo, you should also recuse yourself right there. Also, I believe when the city councillors get the letters of intent and resumes, all names and contact should be redacted and a random number assigned by Ms. Dole should be applied that she only knows who is who. So there aren't any benefits given to friends or family members if said person is in the top five or six for the interview. And as stated above, if any of those fit, a relative coworker, former coworker campaign person or anything or donor, you should recuse yourself from voting to appoint that person.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Pastor Paul Montoya. Great to see you. Thank you for coming.
Hello, City Council and God bless each and every one of you. First of all, I'd congratulate Joe Latino, Roger Gomez, and Mark Aliff, and Heather Graham as our new mayor for the city of Pueblo. But I came to speak tonight in part of the homeless. As all you guys know, my name is Pastor Paul Montoya with people helping people in faith in the Pueblo community. I've been helping the homeless since 2010. I was watching City Council last week and I seen, we heard Councilman Flores speaking about paying the homeless to clean up the city. To start picking up the trash, stuff like that. But it was like a liability with you guys for it would fall on the city's hands. You know, if you guys were thinking about paying the homeless to clean up the city, I'd be willing to help you. Whoever, who better to to clean up the city? The homeless make the mess, let them clean it up. Amen? You know, this is Leroy Anthony Cannon. He was homeless for 10 years down at that river bottom. Two years ago, he said Pastor Paul, I'm going to freeze the dead down here. He says, I said Leroy, you get a check, give me two, $300 of each check and I'll save it for you and I'll get you an apartment, which he did. He saved $1,500. I work with the lady who runs the South Side. That's allowing me to move in these apartments. They're really beautiful apartments with just a first month's rent and a last month's rent. I mean, first month's rent and a deposit. She's not asking for an application fee from me or or last month's rent. She just move in with rent and deposit. But I got to sign the lease that I'm going to be responsible for these people, which I have been. I've got four or five people in these apartment complexes from just a rent and deposit. A lot of these homeless people in Pueblo, they need a hand up, not a handout. I know everybody looks down on the homeless community, but you know what? If you guys are looking for them to clean up the city and you guys are willing to help pay them, we can help you guys with this. And we, you know, we, I get two or three workers a week to go do different jobs throughout the city and they get paid for it. Leroy pays his light bill with it, he pays his phone bill with it. He uses that money wisely. A few of them, they do have problems with alcohol and drugs. But another gentleman, his name is Mark also, he's not using drugs anymore. The money he makes, he buys food, he buys what he needs and he's not drinking alcohol any further. It's just, the city needs some kind of program to help get these people off the streets. And you know what? I'll be willing to work with the city council if we can help do that. Amen? Any questions?
Ask Paul.
Yes.
Excuse me, this is just not a time when we're gonna take questions or anything like that. Anything else?
That's it. You know, if you want to help them help clean up the city, you know, I'd be willing to help yous. You guys got my phone number and I'll be willing to help yous.
Thank you very much, Pastor. Congratulations. Augustine Garcia. Great to see you. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, President Aliff, council members. I want to thank the city council and the new mayor for closing the roadway in. I think that was something that was absolutely necessary. It was a wonderful bit of news when I heard that they were closing that. It has been a terrible blight and problem for our community for some time. So thank you all for doing that. I do want to mention that I am very much in support of Rocky Mountain Sir receiving the funds that Councilwoman Martinez has tried to get for them for some time. They are a very worthy organization. They have helped numerous 501(c)(3)'s in our community. My wife oversees many programs that serve the homeless and indigent populations in this community. And they have been a tremendous resource in getting food, diapers, other resources to individuals who are greatly in need. So that is one of the programs that's out there that's helping to support individuals in recovering from homelessness. Thank you, Rocky Mountain Sir. I would like to use the remainder of my time to talk to you about my concerns regarding a nuclear power plant. Here in Pueblo, we have a large Hispanic population. Most of the individuals that I heard mentioned during Francis Consilia's speech are affluent individuals in our community. I heard a couple of Hispanic names, but those individuals, should something happen, have the means to be able to flee this community in in the hope of finding safety should something go wrong. So Pueblo has always been marginalized from my perspective. At least in the the last 100 years or so, we've had the chemical depot that was finally taken away. That poison was taken away from this community. Finally, now you, they're considering bringing in a nuclear power plant? Why? Who are these jobs going to that they're proposing? Everything that Jeff tries to bring in here through Petco, and I think it's a an organization that does some good, but there's never second chance opportunities afforded to individuals. I was just talking to a friend of mine who is a well-regarded individual. I was sitting next to him here in the audience. And he said, you know, Francis didn't come from a background of affluence. Her father was a steel mill worker and her mother was a nurse. Well, my gosh. Many of us have community or family members who provided to the community in different ways, but they certainly were not still workers because they did, their last names were Garcia and Martinez and Romero. And they didn't have the opportunities that were provided. They certainly weren't nurses. They, and so when we talk about the individuals that are going to be most ill affected here in Pueblo, if something should go wrong with a nuclear power plant, we are talking about the Hispanic population and poor people. And so I think that it is really important to bring to your attention, and most of you are aware of this. I don't know if you are thinking about it right now. But since the Ukraine war has been going on, there have been many plants over there, nuclear power plants that have saw battles in and around them. So we have concerns here, not only of the environmental issues, but of the national safety issues that we could face with having this here. According to the United States Government Accountability Office, it reported more than 150 incidents from 2001 to 2006 of nuclear plants not performing within acceptable safety guidelines. This is a horrible idea for our community. Many of the individuals, the constituents that depend on you guys that have put their trust in you, their hope that you might care about their safety, are counting on you to protect them. Again, these affluent people can can leave. And are we demented? I don't think that we're demented. I think that they, when they proclaim that these things are going to be so safe and it's going to provide such, how do you, how do you equate saving a few dollars on your energy bill with the safety of our community? You can't do that. And when we talk about paying a billion dollars for a fighter jet to take life, how come we can never find the funding to preserve life and to preserve it well? Like the people of Pueblo so desperately are counting on you to do. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Grace Smith. Hello, Ms. Smith.
Hi. I'm going to get me a glass of water before I talk. As you know, my name is Grace Smith. For the last decade, I've had to endure three very tragic losses. First, my 22-year-old son was murdered on October 17th in his own home. His murder is solved. Then two years ago, on February 4th of 2022, my 23-year-old grandson Daniel Howard was gunned down. Then, sorry, then on December 31st of 2023, my 40-year-old son Daniel Smith was shot and killed. His murder is still under investigation. And this murder was a 26 homicide in our city. It's not natural for a parent to bury their children, let alone two children and a grandson. We're all going to die. It's inevitable, inevitable. But to have your three loved ones stolen from you is beyond comprehension. People often tell me, I don't know how you're doing this. My reply to them is that I wasn't given a choice. My son Daniel Smith made a huge impact on Judge Dennis Mays. He even attended his services. My son Paul, my grandson Daniel Howard, and my son Daniel, all three have such potential. What a complete waste of three precious lives. We need more homicide detectives, more police funding, gang funding like Mark Salazar of Hard Knocks. Gang prevention, more activities for our youth. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And obviously, we're so sorry for your losses.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for. Diane Dante. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Mayor Graham, councillors, I'm going to do some trash talking here. Last week at the work session, there was a organization called Team Up to Clean Up that gave a presentation. And after the presentation, one of the councillors had mentioned that we should have mandatory trash service. I think you might want to do a lot more brainstorming than just mandatory trash service. For one thing, mandatory trash service is going to be really hard for low-income people. They don't, they can't even pay their electric bill. So why would they be able to pay a trash service bill? The PUC required Black Hills to do a program called, I believe it's called LEAP, where they do applications for low-income people. So that might be an idea because I don't know where the low-income put their trash right now anyway, you know? So that needed to do a little research on that. Grocery carts. As I was listening, they were just saying, come pick up your grocery carts. And they said, no. And I thought we had an ordinance a while back about charging them for those trash, for those grocery carts. And I should, I think we should follow through on that. Charge them if they're not going to come and pick them up because that grocery cart is their responsibility, not the city's. Needles. I believe, I don't know the exact number, but it seemed like it was around 15,000 needles that was picked up. We have a needle exchange program. And if there's 15,000 needles being thrown on the ground, obviously that program is not working. I don't know if you need to increase the hours it's open or if it's just not working. And the large trash, like the big sofas and things, chairs and things like that. There's one day a year that we have free landfill where we can throw our large trash. Maybe think about increasing that to multiple times a year because people are not going to save their trash for that one day and keep it in their house or in their garage waiting for that one day. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Velma Campbell. Welcome, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the committee, to the council tonight. And thank you for your time and your attention to the important issues. I'm going to be talking about facts tonight, facts about nuclear power and about public participation in our democratic processes. One, I have to say that in spite of all the hard work and energy that PISA committee members put in, much of that report and their resulting show and tell displays consists of partial, partial truths and misinformation. And so I'm going to try and address some of the balance that's needed. For instance, one of the PISA members told this committee earlier this month that people who got, that people that have been at the hearings in the legislature testifying are claiming to be from Pueblo but are not. I'm sorry, I've been here since 1988, working and living, and I consider Pueblo my home. And I was at that hearing where that representative from PISA spoke, not on behalf of PISA, mind you, but on behalf of her other occupation. I have, I feel deeply about those false allegations about those of us who testify and raise questions simply on behalf of a healthy environment and a healthy economy for our community. I believe that there have been too many empty promises and nuclear power is another one. The jobs in Texas promised by the PISA committee are speculative. Let's talk about facts. PISA was not balanced or neutral, though they may well have been uninformed. It specifically was formed to exclude any of us who had raised questions about nuclear power in Chris Wiseman's earlier energy committee. Some have claimed that we would dominate the conversation, which they said rather than addressing our concerns. So-called nuclear, so-called advanced nuclear is still in the research stage, has not been built. And the closest one to an operating pilot plant was the New Scale Corporation, which was 15 to 20 years from completion and billions over budget when it was canceled. That's the company that's been to Pueblo and that has represented itself to this community as a viable, ready-for-prime-time product. Without many billions of dollars in taxpayer subsidies, nuclear would not even be on the table. In fact, that's why the advocates of nuclear power have to dismiss renewable energy so aggressively, running down the vast resources that we actually have here in Pueblo and and misleading, giving misleading information. In fact, in Colorado, the average salary for solar salespeople is over $66 an hour or about $137 a year. $137,000 a year, sorry. Installers have an average in Pueblo of over $25 an hour with an average of $51,000 a year in income. Pueblo is ready for 100% renewable resolution, is far-sighted, good for the economy and our health, and a matter of pride. Only those with a vested interest in the failure of renewable energy at the expense of Pueblo's health and economy would say otherwise. The report from the PISA committee glosses over much of the nuclear industry advocacy regarding concerns and hazards, and indeed produces a false impression of the status of the much-touted developments in nuclear power. The so-called new nuclear is simply old nuclear repackaged in glass vacuum tubes and shipped across the country. The actual plants won't be smaller. They simply pack those, bundle those, those glass vacuum tubes with light water reactors in them so that actually there are eight to 16 experimental nuclear reactors operating in a given plant, for instance, in the XL powered plant building. Regarding water use, the eight to 12 reactors will be operating in a cooling bath at least 70 feet deep. That has to be renewed and the water cannot be reused for general public. The fuel from them, from those reactors have to be removed every one to two years and then sit in another bath 60 to 70 feet deep for five years before the radioactive waste is stored on site in our community for anywhere from 100 to 20,000 years, depending on how long it takes them to convince some other disadvantaged community to become a national nuclear waste site. The nuclear industry and DOE are presenting a sales pitch for new and advanced nuclear and want to get in on funding for clean energy and access to our disproportionately impacted communities. Someone on the council asked the very intelligent question, why Pueblo? Well, it's because they're going around marketing to communities that they feel are too disadvantaged and desperate to look this gift horse in the mouth. I think that if the imbalance between the subsidies, the multi-billion, tens of billions of dollars of subsidies that go to nuclear power every year, a roughly 10 to one ratio for compared to nuclear to renewable energy, if that balance was adjusted, renewable energy is more than ready and capable to handle the distribution issue. And I could go into the weeds about why, but I won't.
Come back and fill us out, fill us in with some more. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, now we move on to council member and mayor commentary. We'll start with the mayor tonight. Mayor Graham.
Thank you, President Alef. Chief Solano, do you want to start off with the CAFI information?
Yes, good evening, President Alef, council and Mayor Graham. Mayor asked me to just to share a little bit about the CAFI, the cities addressing fines and fees as, as I know that our city attorney is in the room also. The city received a grant from the National League of Cities to sponsor the look at how to encourage a community service aspect of reducing fines and fees, which Judge Sykes has done an incredible job with. Well, this last Saturday, the team visited as the city sponsored a fines and fees reduction date. It was successful. It wasn't overwhelmingly break-in doors down, but very successful. Those that did attend were able to negotiate a reduction of their fine and fee by 50% if they had agreed to three financial empowerment counseling sessions at one of our new financial empowerment centers. We saw individuals with fines that began as about $150 and up to 6,000. So I think it was a successful event that the mayor asked that I share that with you. And I know that Judge Sykes will be looking at perhaps replicating what event took place last Saturday. So that concludes comments about the CAFI fines and fees day last week. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief of Staff Solano. And then just a couple more. Clyde, can you put the flyer up? I'd like to invite the city council as well as the rest of Pueblo to join the local NAACP during Black History Month for their program of events throughout the month. We have shared the calendar of events on our city Facebook page, but you can also see it up on the screen here in council chambers. They started last week with the events all over the city and have more opportunities to join in for concerts, film screenings, and the celebration of Black History through February 27th. I encourage my fellow citizens to celebrate and engage with the NAACP because we know Black History is American history, the theme of the programming and the events this month. And so that schedule is posted on our Facebook page if anybody would like to check out any of the events being hosted by the NAACP. My next memo is you see Chief of Staff Solano on the screen tonight. And then you see our Director of HR here in person. And so Chief of Staff Solano will be retiring this month, February 29th. And so we thank her for the last five years she has dedicated to the city of Pueblo. And our Director of HR, Ms. Marissa Pacheco, will be our interim Chief of Staff for the time being. We are going to have a very competitive recruitment process for the Chief of Staff position. And everybody at home and people here will be able to apply for that position. I think we're going to post it later this week or early next week after we narrow that down. So be on the lookout for that position if anybody is interested in the Chief of Staff for me. And then lastly, tonight, you're going to see a resolution come across for the appointment of Chief Knoller as my deputy mayor. I'd just like to say that Mr. Knoller has served the police department for almost 27 years, starting out as a patrol officer in 1996. He holds a Master of Arts degree in criminal justice from Boston University. He served in the United States Navy Reserve from 1982 to 2001. Mr. Knoller has extensive leadership skills and personal investment in the public community. And which is, this was qualifying him to serve as my deputy mayor. And I hope the city council gives me grace tonight and ratifying my decision for my appointment in our resolutions. And that's all I have, President Alef.
Thank you, Mayor Graham. We'll go to Counselor Martinez.
I wanted to say congratulations to Ms. Solano. I appreciate all of the work that you've done after hours and late nights. And I just, you've, you've done the city great over the past couple of years. And it's been a pleasure to work with you. So happy retirement, Ms. Solano. And congratulations to Ms. Pacheco. Very exciting. I wanted to reiterate Ms. Smith's point during public forum around how investing in our young people is so crucial, and I can't agree with her more that it, the more that we find pro-social things for our young people to do, the healthier our community is, the safer our community is because they have something healthy to engage in. And so I'm hopeful that our council can really think about that this upcoming year, about how we can increase more pro-social opportunities for our young people to participate in our community because I truly think that prevention is key here. And I also want to remind everyone that applications for vacancy for city council are due this Friday by end of day. And I encourage anyone who is interested to apply. And I look forward to reviewing all of these, those applications.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Flores.
Yes, I wanted to follow up on our last meeting in which we had 25 lacrosse players that came from the university kind of asking for our help. And I volunteered to meet with them and see what I could do, even though we have no authority over decisions that the university makes. But I thought it was important and I wanted to remind all the councilors here that it's not usual for us to think of all the students at the university as our constituents, but they really are. They're out in the community renting apartments, they're buying stuff, they're buying cars, their parents, you know, visit us and spend their money here. And so it really changed my attitude about the focus that we should have as city council people in listening to the concerns of our constituents. And I took it very seriously. And I, I happened to visit with the chancellor of the CSU system and he directed the athletic director to answer the tough questions of why this happened out there because they felt that, you know, they were blindsided by that decision and not given much time. And I'm, I continue, I've met with them a couple of times and I will be sending a final report to the chancellor and the athletic director of what I discovered that they could improve the way they do stuff like that. Because in many ways, the decisions were kind of, you know, I mean, there were several things that happened that I didn't really care. They should have been handled a lot more delicately than they were. But I think all the students appreciated that at least we got involved. I know that Counselor Martino and I think Latino and Counselor Gomez also had some discussion with them. But they knew that we cared about their situation up there. And I, the only good news I have to report right now is that they will finish the season, which started February 1st. So they'll have this season. And that decision of shutting down lacrosse will not take place till next year. But I will continue, you know, hopefully maybe that a decision with the information that I found may be changed. It may not. But it's important that we pay attention to our constituents and at least sympathize with what's being done. And all of us could learn from that experience. But I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to talk to them. And I think they felt a lot better and that we were concerned about their dilemma. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Flores. Counselor Gomez.
Yeah, and as I'm learning going through this, Dennis, I appreciate your remarks because we're kind of right on the same page. My concern is how we are constantly sidetracked by so much attention that is given to some very ambitious projects by a real emergency crisis such as the stormwater issues I have in Vecima and flooding in the District Four area is not and has not been addressed or properly mitigated for decades. People's homes, businesses, and properties continue to suffer from expensive foundation damage that lead to dramatic health issues like mold, respiratory issues, and serious allergic reactions. The main issue is that District Four has a deteriorating antiquated stormwater ceramic drainage system that is crumbling dating back to the 1930s. Nearly a full century of local government neglect. Let me give you an example of another stormwater disaster occurred in Pepper Sauce Bottoms and took nearly five decades to solve with the installation of a simple curb. I'm going to do this extra, I'm just going to give this story to you. I, when I, I was a director for Congressman Scott McGinnis years ago. When I visited a place called Pepper Sauce Bottom, I was curious. I heard some things about flooding. And I went out and visited the homes out there. The third home I went to, the gal said, you know, you're asking about flooding? I said, correct. She was letting me, she invited me into her house. And unbeknownst to me, I was asking, well, you get flooding? She says, yes, it's pretty bad. And I said, well, show me the high watermark. So naturally I walked outside to go look for the high watermark. Folks, she didn't do that. She moved her couch. It was inside her house. You've got to be kidding me. Almost five decades to solve that problem with a curb? Are you serious? That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Maestri?
Just congratulations to Ms. Solano. And, you know, this time enjoy your retirement and thank you for your service. There's been a lot of subjects that have come up tonight. I think that not just the lacrosse team has a problem, but I think the university as a whole, there's rumors out there that it might have a problem. So I just asked that the community pay attention to see what's really going on financially with the university. And then also thank for everybody to, for coming up tonight and letting us know how they feel about our community. And, you know, with our new administration, leadership and new council members. You know, hopefully we could deliver some things that the community is more satisfied with. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Latino?
I would like to thank Ms. Solano as well, Mrs. Solano, for, for her work over the course of the last five years. We will miss you, Laura, and thank you for all that you've done. Councilman Flores, thank you for what you did for the university. I'm with you on that. I've spoken with them as well. But thank you for doing that. And I'm willing to work with you so that we can do those kinds of things to help these young people. And as it relates to an earlier comment by Pastor Paul, who's now gone, again, they're doing things in other places as it relates to the homeless. I've done my research as it relates to that. And we need to really move forward in working in that, in that regard to, to, to put them to work. And, and they're willing to do that. I've spoken with a number of them. So as a community, we need to do that and then, and then pay them. That's what we do. Instead of giving them the money, we pay them. But the focus in this community has to be our youth. And we need to start putting some programs together for these young people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I too want to congratulate Laura Solano. I've had the opportunity to work with her for several years. And I will say, one of the hardest things when you're a city counselor is cutting through the red tape, getting things done, getting access to the things that you need to do your job. I can tell you that I never, ever contacted that office where Ms. Solano wasn't right on it, handled it, took care of it, and she performed her job well. And she will be sorely missed. And those are, are big shoes to fill. And I congratulate her wholeheartedly. I wanted to follow up quickly with Ms. Dante, who was at the meeting last week when we heard from the trash people. And you made the point that 15,000 needles were found in the cleanup. It was actually 75,000 needles. So there were, and let's be clear on this. This isn't a cleanup of the whole city. This is just a cleanup in very just places where, where they decided to go in and clean. But as a percentage, it was probably a very low percentage of the area of the city that needs to be cleaned up. So we can, we can use simple math and say if they found 75,000 needles within this area or these few areas that they cleaned up last year, can you only imagine the number of needles that are actually laying around in our community? I think it would be safe to say that there's hundreds of thousands of needles laying across Pueblo in all areas of the community, not just in areas habitated by homeless people. They're everywhere. That program does not work. When it started, it was a clear one-on-one exchange. If you wanted a needle, you came in with a needle and you got one. And it has never, ever been that way. And something has to change. And we're going to work very hard as a council. And, and we've had discussions of this, of working very hard to remedy that problem. We just can't be a community that is okay with that, that, that you can discard needles anywhere and everywhere and, and just make it our responsibility to take care of that. So it's very important that we look at that. I just wanted to clarify, it was a lot more needles than what, than, than what you said. And I'll leave it at that and we'll move on to the next thing on the agenda, which is the review of the agenda. Page one. Page two.
Mr. President, I'd like to pull M3 to the regular portion of the meeting.
M3 to the regular. Page three.
Mr. President, I'd like to move M23 to the regular agenda.
M23 to the regular agenda.
President Alef, I'd like to continue M22 to the January 26th meeting or February 26th meeting so that we have a full council and we know if we need to change or adjust board appointments since you guys will be choosing your council member a couple of days before. I didn't see it fit that we didn't give your seventh member any board spaces.
Thank you. Page four. Page five. And page six.
President Alef, I'd like to move R10 to the February 26th meeting.
So R10 to 226.
And if we could move R9 up to the front of the agenda for final presentation.
Okay, can I get an approval of the agenda?
I motion to amend the agenda, Mr. President, moving M3 and, and M23 to the regular portion of the agenda. And then moving M22 and R10 to February 26th, the regular meeting.
And R9.
And moving R9 to the front of the regular agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call for the action?
That's different. I don't have, I don't have a screen to vote. Can we just call roll call?
Mark Alef.
Yes.
Dennis Flores.
Yes.
Roger Gomez.
Yes.
Jill Latino.
Yes.
Regina Maestri.
Yes.
Sarah Martinez.
This is broken. That's why I moved it over here.
That's where we're at. So that passes unanimously. Can I get a read with, how about we move down to Jay, reading an approval of amendments? Going to make that one.
I motion to dispense with the reading and approval of the minutes of the regular meeting due to January 22nd, 2024 is attributed.
Second.
Let's call for the action.
Mark Alef.
Yes.
Dennis Flores.
Yes.
Roger Gomez.
Yes.
Jill Latino.
Yes.
Regina Maestri.
Yes.
Sarah Martinez.
Pass of 7-0, Madam Clerk, Communication.
6-0.
6-0, yeah. I keep thinking there's seven. I was, there's not.
You'll be able to say that a lot very soon.
I will. Insane agenda.
Item L Communications, L1, Minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission, regular meeting for 12/13/2023. M resolutions, item M1, a resolution awarding construction contract to the amount of $1,482,745.80 to Tony J. Belltramo and Sons, Inc., for project number 24-002 Asphalt Utility Improvements, Northern Avenue, Prairie to I-25, setting for $345,920.20 for contingencies and authorizing the purchasing agent execute same. And M2, a resolution ratifying an emergency construction contract, the amount of $444,876 with Evoqua Water Technology LLC for emergency dissolved air flotation thickener, DAST repair, project number 23A-043, WWAN04, the James R. Project number twenty-three A dash zero four three WWANO four at the James R. Delorio Well, Water Rock Commission Facility and approving the purchasing agent's execution of same. Item M four, a resolution awarding an agreement for professional engineering services in the amount of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars to Dibble and Associates Consulting Engineering, Inc., and Arizona Corporation for project number twenty-three dash zero seven six, design of Lake and Ormond Roundabout and authorizing the purchasing agent to execute same. Item M five, a resolution authorizing payment of one hundred fifty thousand dollars from project number CI twenty-one thirteen, American Rescue Plan Act for purposes of information, technology, cybersecurity and network infrastructure for the Real-Time Crime Center as authorized by section six oh three, print A of the American Rescue Plan Act and U.S. Treasury Final Rule thirty-one CFR thirty-five. Item M six, the resolution awarding an agreement for professional engineering services, the amount of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred sixty-four dollars to Dibble and Associates Consulting Engineers, Inc., and Arizona Corporation for project number twenty-three dash zero five two, design of intersection improvements at Jerry Murphy Road and Chinook Lane and authorizing the purchasing agent to execute same. Item M seven, a resolution ratifying an emergency construction contract, the amount of twelve thousand, six hundred seventy-one dollars and ninety-two cents with Parker Excavating, Inc., for emergency sanitary sewer point repair at six twenty-four East Fourth Street, project number twenty dash zero five nine WWANO three, and approving the purchasing agent's execution of same. Item M eight, a resolution ratifying an emergency construction contract, the amount of nine thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars and sixty-five cents with Parker Excavating, Inc., for emergency sanitary sewer point repair at twenty-one oh five Ridge Wood Lane, the project number twenty dash zero five nine WWANO three, and approving the purchasing agent's execution of same. Item M nine, a resolution awarding amendment number one to a construction contract, the amount of eight thousand, two hundred and one dollars and sixty cents to Impact Industrial Services LLC, a Colorado limited liability company for project number twenty-three dash one oh nine, abate and demolish, seven eighteen West Fourth Street, CBPG, and authorizing a purchasing agent to execute same. Item M ten, a resolution approving acceptance of eight thousand, two hundred and three dollars and fifty cents for the reimbursement of expenses from Health Solutions of Pueblo, a nonprofit organization relating to the delivery of services via the Solutions Outreach Services Team, SOS Team, and depositing these funds in the general fund. Item M eleven, a resolution ratifying an emergency construction contract, the amount of seven thousand, four hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents with Parker Excavating, Inc., for emergency sanitary sewer point repair at twenty-five seventeen Winnipeg Street, project number twenty dash zero five nine WWANO three, and authorizing the purchasing agent execution of same. Item M twelve, a resolution transferring six thousand dollars from project number CD one, one nineteen eleven into project number CD twenty-one eleven for the demolition of the Albany Building, bid number twenty-three dash one four two. Item M thirteen, and a resolution approving an easement agreement for Brookwood Park between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation and Black Hills Energy for the installation of underground distribution line. Item M fourteen, a resolution preliminarily determining that the petition for the annexation of the eight point zero one eight acre area, commonly known as the first addition to Villabella Annexation, is valid under the provisions of the Colorado revised statutes, section thirty-one dash twelve dash one oh four, print one, print A, and thirty-one dash twelve dash one oh seven, print one, tabling final action on the petition for a period of not more than a hundred and eighty days and referring the petition to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and recommendation. Item M fifteen, a resolution preliminarily determining that the petition for annexation of the ten point zero nine four acre area, commonly known as the second addition to Villabella Annexation, is valid under the provisions of the Colorado revised statute, section thirty-one dash twelve, just one oh four, print one, print A, and thirty-one dash twelve dash one oh seven, print one, tabling final action on the petition for a period of not more than a hundred and eighty days and referring the petition to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and recommendation. Item N sixteen, M sixteen, a resolution preliminarily determining the petition for annexation of the seventy-nine point six three seven acre area, commonly known as a third addition to the Villabella Annexation, is valid under the provisions of the Colorado revised statutes, sections thirty-one dash twelve dash one oh four, print one, print A, and thirty-one dash twelve dash one oh seven, print one, tabling final action of the petition for a period not more of a hundred and eighty days and referring the petition to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and recommendation. Item M seventeen, a resolution authorizing the issuance of the revocable permit, REV dash twenty-three dash forty-eight, to Fuel and Iron Master Tenant LLC for the purpose of installing a planter to enhance the street scrape, scape on the sidewalk adjacent to B Street and the fuel and iron parking lot. Item M eighteen, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a revocable permit, REV dash twenty-one dash one, to Pesada for the purpose of constructing a six-foot-high wrought iron fence along the existing sidewalk within the public right-of-way on the east side of Lake Avenue and the south side of Indiana Avenue, adjacent to the property at twenty twenty-four Lake Avenue. Item N nineteen, a resolution confirming the appointment by the mayor of Dylan Goodman and Mike McWakefield to complete a four-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, on the Pueblo Energy Advisory Commission. Item M twenty, a resolution confirmed the appointment by the mayor of David Roscovery to complete a three-year term expiring November one, twenty twenty-six, on the Pueblo Streetscape Advisory Committee. Item M twenty-one, uh, the resolution confirming the appointment by the mayor of Steve Naraki, Garrison Ortiz, and Jim Valadilla to the Pueblo Urban Renewal Authority Board. Item M twenty-four, a resolution confirming the appointment of Stephen Chris Knoller to the position of deputy mayor. Item M twenty-five, a resolution ratifying Payco's joint appointment of Russell Giffing to the Pueblo Regional Building Plumbing Board of Appeals as journeyman. Item M twenty-six, a resolution ratifying Payco's joint appointment of Robert Barr to the Foundation Creek Watershed Flood Control and Greenway District Board. Item M twenty-seven, and a resolution ratifying Payco's joint appointment of Alva Klosna to the Community Services Advisory Committee, CSAC. Item M twenty-eight, a resolution ratifying Payco's joint appointment of Brandon Martin, Andrea Naglitz, Sol Sandoval Tapata, and Calico Vargas to the Pueblo Human Relations Commission and ratifying the appointment, the reappointment of Raya Singh to the Pueblo Human Relations Commission Youth Position. Uh, no, M twenty-nine, a resolution appoint, approving an agreement between the City of Pueblo, a Colorado Municipal Corporation, and Brown and Cadwell, Inc., to provide engineering services for the Pueblo Wastewater Department and authorizing the mayor to execute same. And ordinances for his presentation. Item N one, an ordinance approving a deposit agreement between Jordan Engineering LLC and New Mexico Limited Liability Company and the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation, relating to the collection of a deposit for the installation of public improvements and authorizing execution thereof by the mayor. Item N two, an ordinance establishing project number CI twenty-four twenty-three, energy performance contract audit, budgeting and appropriating a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the unappropriate fund balance of the general fund for said project and approving a memorandum of understanding between the State of Colorado, by and through the Colorado Energy Office and the City of Pueblo, and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Item M three, an ordinance accepting funds in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars from Goodwin Knight LLC, satisfying developer obligation with response, with respect to installation of traffic control improvements at the intersection of Parker Boulevard and Spalding Avenue, condition of the east of Pueblo Boulevard and south of Tuxedo Boulevard Annexation Agreement dated May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, or, uh, two thousand one, excuse me, and approved under ordinance number six six eight eight, establishing project number CI twenty-four twenty-five, traffic control improvements at Parker and Spalding and budgeting and appropriating sixty-five thousand dollars in this account. Item N four, an ordinance approving a trail license agreement and license to cross between the state of Colorado, by and through the Colorado Department of Transportation and the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation, related to the operating, operation and maintenance of trail improvements to be installed as part of CDOT's project to reconstruct the I twenty-five, US fifty B interchange, and authorizing execution thereof by the mayor. Item N five, an ordinance approving a cooperation agreement between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation, and the County of, of Pueblo related to the administration of the tenant-based rental assistance in accordance with the Federal Home Investment Partnerships Program requirements, and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Item N six, an ordinance establishing project number H zero two four seven zero, tenant-based rental assistance project, transferring seventy-five thousand dollars from project H zero two twenty-one fifty, twenty-five thousand dollars from project number HO twenty-two sixty, sixty-six thousand, nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighty-three cents from project number HO twenty-one thirty, and accepting twenty-two thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars and seventeen cents from the County of Pueblo, budgeting and appropriating funds, the amount of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and five dollars, and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Item N seven, an ordinance approving an agreement to provide tenant-based rental assistance in the amount of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and five dollars between Pesada, Inc., a Colorado nonprofit corporation, and the Pueblo Colorado Municipal Corporation, authorizing the mayor to execute same. Item N eight, an ordinance approving a sub, a sub-agreement for professional engineering services between Dibble and Associates Consulting Engineering, the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation, to prepare an environmental and cultural documented category exclusion, CDEX, for the tax lane rehabilitation and new hangar project, and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Item N nine, an ordinance approving and accepting Colorado Division of Criminal Justice twenty twenty-three SMART grant, state submission for assistance in recruiting and training grant program. It's a funding opportunity offered through the Office of Adult and Juvenile Assistance for fiscal years twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, award number twenty twenty-three dash LE dash twenty-four dash twelve, and applicable conditions pertaining thereto, establishing project number PS twenty-three sixteen, budgeting and appropriating funds not to exceed seven hundred ninety-one thousand, eight hundred eleven dollars, and authorizing the mayor to execute same and related certificates, assurances, and other documents, and ratifying her signature thereto. Item N ten, an ordinance approving and accepting a Colorado Department of Law Division of Community Engagement Grant to support the Financial Empowerment Center for residents of the City of Pueblo, establishing project number CI twenty-four twenty-four, budgeting and appropriating funds not to exceed five hundred two thousand, five hundred dollars, and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Item N eleven, an ordinance budgeting and appropriating seventy-one thousand, five hundred dollars from the unappropriated fund balance from the general fund and authorizing the expenditure of the same to the Mayor Posta Center for Safety for operating costs through June twenty twenty-four. Item N twelve, an ordinance approving an agreement between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation, the Board of Governors, the Colorado State University System, acting by and through the Colorado State University Pueblo, regarding unpaid internships and authorizing the mayor to execute same.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to receive and file the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission, approve all resolutions set forth in the consent agenda, pass the ordinances of the consent agenda, setting the public hearing for February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, and order the ordinances to be published by title.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call for the action?
Mark Alef?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Jill Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
I pass six zero. Uh, Madam Clerk, the regular agenda?
Uh, would you like to move to the items that were removed from the consent agenda?
Yeah, start with the resolution M three.
Okay. Uh, item M three, a resolution authorizing payment of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from project number CI twenty-one thirteen, American Rescue Plan Act for the purposes of purchasing property known as twenty-seven oh one East Twelfth Street, Pueblo, Colorado, performing certain property boundary changes, performing certain improvements, and authorizing the mayor to execute any required documents as authorized by section six oh three, print A of the American Rescue Plan Act and U.S. Treasury Final Rule thirty-one CFR thirty-five.
Thank you. We have a staff report, Mr. Meyer?
Yes. Good evening, members of council, Mayor Graham. This, uh, resolution is, uh, um, committing a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from our funds to purchase Saint Anne's. Saint Anne's is over off side and it's the, there's a church there, Saint Anne's. And, um, we've been leasing the facility since two thousand and four. We've done tons of improvements, ball field, restroom, playground. And, uh, this past year, they notified us and said they wanted us to, um, purchase it from them instead of leasing it. So that's why we're, we're doing this. We're gonna purchase the property for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And the other amount of funds are set up for building the fence, readjusting irrigation, uh, some title work and, um, soft costs like that, some survey work. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Uh, councillor Martinez, I know you pulled this. Do you have questions?
Um, if we, we can motion in second, if we could motion in second before discussion.
Can I get a motion? To either approve?
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Councillor Latino?
I just want to say I support, um, what Parks and Recreation is doing. I've spent a lot of time out at Saint Anne's and, and that facility that they have out there is, is unbelievable and the young people in that part of the community need that, that facility. And, uh, so anything we can do to support Parks and Recreation and, and, uh, that area, Eastwood Heights in our community, uh, we need to do. And so I'm supporting that one hundred percent.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, councillor Martinez?
Yeah, I appreciate my, the information, Mr. Meyer. I didn't realize that the city had been leasing the property and land, which is kind of cool. So are we going to be building the, or owning the building and the land adjacent, and by the land, I mean like the field?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna really adjust the lot lines and we're gonna leave the church and their, uh, parking lot on their property and then we're gonna own the ball field, the playground and, um, the restroom.
It's a great, I, yeah, I just, I had no idea that the city had leased it. It's a great, um, ball field and I know that the restrooms were just recently redone too, so.
Yep, they get used a lot.
Cool. And is it gonna be for Parks and Rec programming?
Yes.
Cool.
Any other questions? Comments? Call for the action?
Mark Alef?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Jill Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
Pass a six zero. Uh, I believe we go to M twenty-three now?
Item M twenty-three, a resolution confirming the appointment by the mayor of Ria Santalago, Darren Husler, Rosella Para, Stephanie Costenas, Erin Lucero, Andrea Naglitz, Brett Stewart, Selena Gomez-Ruez, and Yonera McCully to the Your Idea, Your Neighborhood Review Committee, expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Staff report? I get rid of this.
Good evening, members of council, Mayor Graham. Uh, this is the nine-member committee that we, um, explained to you last week in the work session. So as we move forward with, uh, Your Idea, Your Neighborhood, um, these are the nine representatives, two from each district and one at-large individual. And that's the staff report.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, councillor Gomez?
Nope.
Councillor Maestron?
Um, yes, I, um, brought this to the table because, again, as a councillor, as a, uh, elected representative district one, I feel it is my duty to work with the constituency. And I would prefer to, to, uh, do that. And so if we wanted to run the Your Neighborhood, Your Idea, you know, when you say you're appointing two people from each district, again, um, it's really not, the, the, working with the community is in the proposals that are brought forward. And so to appoint someone in front of us to work with the community takes away from really our sworn duty to work with the community if this program is gonna take place. So I'm not trying to kibosh the program. But, um, I would like to, for council to be the committee. Um, and so I wanted to have that opportunity to vote for it individually, um, to see if council is interested in being the committee themselves. And so we can go ahead and, uh, call for the vote.
Uh, councillor Latino?
No.
No, we're not voting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. Did you have any comment? My question would be for you guys. If this committee, if council did not approve this committee, uh, would you need another resolution to have city council as the review committee?
I think that would be a question that we would need to ask, um, city attorney Sykes, if we would need to redo a resolution for that.
So if I understand the question you're asking, if under this current resolution, you would, the committee would then be changed to council instead of the, the members that are proposed?
Well, that wasn't the question I asked, but I understand what you're saying. Is that, so does she need to make a motion to, to amend it? Or do we just say we don't want this committee and come back with another resolution that says that city council will be the right, the review committee?
You could do it either way. You could move to amend it or you could, um, vote against this resolution and then bring it back under a new resolution, which would most likely be the cleanest way to do it.
Councillor Martinez?
Um, like I said last week, I'm very excited and I have, I, I recognize some late names on this list and others I don't. I have full confidence in the committee for making the appropriate decisions. Like we entrust the several other committees that we have in the city to make recommendations that city council ultimately ratifies. It's gonna be the exact same process. So I, I have full confidence in the committee and I'm resounding yes for approving this committee as it stands.
I'm gonna make a motion to, okay, I'm gonna make a motion to amend it, to remove these members from the committee and put place council as the committee.
Is there a second to the motion? So we have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Call for the vote on the motion?
Um, on the amendment?
On the, yes, um, this will be on the amendment to, and the amendment is to insert city council as the review committee.
Mark Alef?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
No.
Roger Gomez?
I'm voting yes on the amendment.
Jill Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
So the motion passes, the amendment passes. Now do we need to vote?
No.
No, we're good?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe that'll take us, um,
To R nine?
To,
Oh, no, the resolution.
Are we, are we doing the two resolutions first or are we?
Resolution first.
Um, resolutions then. Item Q one, a resolution authorizing payment from the council contingencies account, the twenty twenty-four general fund budget to the Pueblo Friends, the Arkansas River, in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars to sponsor the trout on the route fundraiser.
Stand here.
You want me to read it again?
Please.
Q one, a resolution authorizing payment from the council contingencies account, the twenty twenty-four general fund budget to Pueblo Friends of the Arkansas River, in the amount of two hundred dollars to sponsor the trout on the route fundraiser.
Is there a report?
Yes, President Alef, the council and Mayor Graham, I have the, uh, staff report. Um, this is, I'm asking for council's favorable approval of the use of council contingencies fund, um, to support the, uh, Pueblo Friends of the Arkansas River. This, uh, council sponsored into twenty twenty-three as well for three hundred dollars versus the two hundred and fifty requested in twenty twenty-four. And the funds are used to clean up a variety of, of areas along the trails. And the funds are used to clean up a variety of, of areas along the trails, Orion Lake, uh, sponsor events like fishing, the lessons for kids and other amenities of, uh, along the river trail. And that does conclude staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solano. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions?
I'm sorry, who is the second?
Counselor Gomez. Any questions, comments? We'll call for the vote.
Mark Aleph?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Mastry?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
Madam Clerk, Q two?
Uh, pass it six, zero. Item Q two, a resolution authorizing payment from the council contingencies account, the twenty twenty four general fund budget to Pueblo Firefighter Historical Society in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars to sponsor a table at the firefighters' ball and awards dinner on Saturday, March second, twenty twenty four, at five P. M. At the Public Convention Center.
And a staff report?
Yes, um, yes, President Aleph, council and Mayor Graham, uh, this is a fifteen hundred dollar request. This is the first request to sponsor, um, this event where it raises funds in support of the historical society for firefighters. Um, there is confirmation that it is a qualified five oh one C three. Um, the facility is located at one sixteen North Main. Many people volunteer, many hours that are committed to preserving the history. And the museum was added to the, uh, Colorado Most Endangered Places in twenty nineteen. And that concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solano. Is there a motion to approve? Ruth?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any questions? Call for the action?
Mark Aleph?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Mastry?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
That passes six, zero. Uh, we now move to R nine?
Item R nine, an ordinance for safe use of public property to limit public camping and prohibit temporary structures on public property within the city of Pueblo, Colorado. Introduced January twenty second, twenty twenty four by Counselor Sarah Martinez.
Do we have a staff report?
Yes, President Aleph, members of council, this is a ordinance that would, um, limit public camping and prohibit temporary structures on public property within the city of Pueblo. Um, the ordinance would apply to all encampments located on public property where camping is not expressly authorized by the city. It establishes the ordinances and sets penalties for that to help prevent health and safety hazards brought on by this, uh, camping. And it would make it a municipal violation, class two violation, uh, in order to violate the ordinance. I have done some research and I know Mr. Hippolyte has talked to council before on this. Um, there are cases out there that have talked of, uh, about ordinances like this. Um, and Mr. Hippolyte drafted this ordinance. He drafted it within the language of those other ordinances. So essentially this ordinance would say that it would be unlawful for someone to camp on a public property where there was other, um, shelter available to the city. So the city would have to demonstrate, um, that there were, uh, there's sufficient shelter for the homeless population in Pueblo in order to cite anybody under this ordinance as the law currently sits. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. This is a public hearing and I'm going to open it up and ask if there is anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Come down.
Please state your name again for the record.
Augustine Garcia.
Thank you.
I don't know that I'm entirely in favor of this. I didn't know this particular provision existed in this ordinance proposal, making it a condition that adequate, um, shelter needed to be available in, um, lieu of an individual being able to camp out in a public place. So I do think that this ordinance is very much overdue. I think that the city needs to enact an ordinance so that it makes our, uh, city safer, so that it makes it cleaner, so that it makes it a place that is able to be enjoyed by people in the traditional sense of life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. We should be able to walk along the river without fear of coming in contact with a needle or coming in contact with a person who is under the, the influence of substances. I think that, um, we all, and I know some of you in particular are led by your, um, spiritual convictions on this. We all have a heart, I think, for the homeless. But certainly when, um, opportunities and programs are made available to individuals to avail themselves of changing their circumstances and they do not take advantage of those, we certainly cannot continue in the way that we have been going. I is distasteful when we have, um, individuals that come to our town and want to know about it and they go and they tour it and we see the abundance of homelessness that takes place. Some people say, hey, look, how in the world are we going to get a homeless person to pay a fine if they, uh, don't have a job? Well, Joe Arpaio, I'm not a fan of the fellow, but he did come up with an alternative in Arizona and that was his jail tent city, quote jail tent city. So I don't, um, I, I want to see changes come to this community, changing the roadway in, kicking the people out there that were creating nuisances to our community. This is another step in the right direction and I applaud it. Thank you all very much for considering this.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Please state your name for the record. Go ahead and press the mic right there, the on the, yeah, thank you.
Okay, Elena Garcia. So I'm in favor of this ordinance for the fact that, and first before I start, I wanted to congratulate Heather Graham. And thank you for allowing me to speak right now. Um, um, for this order, ordinance for several reasons. One of them is I live in the neighborhood around Dutch Clark. I also do dog rescue for the Pueblo community and I work with many animal groups. Um, we can't even get our animals together or re- reunite with families or do anything like that because we are fearful. Not only for our safety, but for animals and our children and our grandchildren. My dog actually brought me in a needle the other day from the house. Now I shouldn't have to have that. This particular dog also sniffs out things that should not be in my yard. Those things are backpacks, broken down bikes, wagons, shoes, clothing items, shampoos. Everything that you can think of ends up hiding in bushes in my yard and behind trees. I also have a piece of land that nobody could claim. That's not my land. It's part of the cities behind me. And they actually put everything back there. So I am for this ordinance. I feel that when my granddaughter comes from Denver, Colorado to visit me, I shouldn't have to worry about walking down the trail and going over the brand new Fourth Street Bridge and having needles everywhere. I don't know what needs to happen. I don't know what we need to address here. Maybe we need security. Maybe we need a big cleanup. I don't know. But we do need to do something. I'm also worried about the environment of Pueblo. I mean, they're dumping things in the water. There are soaps going through there, leftover food. All that causes health problems and disease. I witnessed this in Denver when a big influx of people moved in and they didn't have an ordinance and it was bonkers, out of control. That's the only way I could explain that. And I don't want Pueblo to be that next Denver and that next city. Because there's only more and more people moving in here, not moving out. And I don't know what to say other than it needs to be addressed. We need to clean it up. And all of us in Pueblo deserve to feel safe. And also we do not need to be walking down there and seeing people use drugs as well. So I think security would be a start. Maybe, um, some cleanup would be the second thing I would suggest. And that's about all I have to say. And thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anyone else wishing, wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Downstate your name?
Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations. I'd like to add into that.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Brett Averna.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm in, uh, full support of the camping ban. Just for the simple reason, I've just recently traveled to Portland and a few other places. The environmental impact of our lands and especially our water waste, the significant trash to waste, including the human waste, chemicals will leave an impact that take years to mitigate. It opens up Pueblo for lawsuits, allowing the contaminated water to flow downstream like springs just went through in the past from everybody else below. I want to be a good neighbor so we don't have that problem. The other issues is, you, once you start this and it becomes a bigger issue and lawsuit starts, then you get EPA involved. That really becomes complicated. Also, the time and the cost of fighting the fires that have been going on down there recently in the past. What happens if one of them gets totally out of hand? The property damage, the business as well as the destruction of the habitat that goes on down there and the environmental damage to our water sources due to the erosion in the ass and the settlement, ash and the settlement. For those who really want to just live free, there are state parks, national forest campgrounds that all have facilities to handle camping. That is why they are designed and therefore it, I was just in Portland, Oregon, and the destruction from the camping and the trash in the City of the Roses almost made me want to cry. It's unbelievable. It'll take decades to recover because they let it go so far. Looks like a war zone. They are now trying to shut down the camping. However, it's going to be invasive and very difficult to do. The damage is already done to a once beautiful city. It is just unbelievable, folks. As well as going through Boise and seeing they're handling that. Spent two days there, spent six days in Utah to see how Ogden's doing it in Salt Lake City. We need to get in front of it. We're the home of the heroes. We need to take pride in the appearance of our city once again. Pueblo came before us, spent over fifty years cleaning up our city with Keep Pueblo Beautiful, Wednesday Weeters and many other programs. You know, if you've gone down there and you're trying the trail, you're riding your bike, you're with your grandkids, there are some major concerns. Not only that, and that's the part that we've got to do. I mean, uh, being the home of the heroes, my father would turn over in his grave and so many other people that have been down here. We need to bring it back to what we were in the history of Pueblo. One thing my grandfather always told me when I was young, if you don't want to go there, don't go there. And anything you do, but if you go there, you're always going to have to go there from here on out. Portland's experiencing that in a really bad way. That's ground zero. So I took a trip to go out there so I'd understand what this is about. And it is phenomenally an experience that makes you want to cry. You can't read the traffic signs, the so much graffiti, the trash that's all down in the City of Roses along the roadways and the highways and the area. It's, it's unbelievable to let that go that far. I don't even know if they'll ever recover. But anyway, I'm for the ordinance. It's not perfect, but it's a step in the right direction. And I really want to thank what the city has done with the roadway. That was really a problem. The Boston's that are running Southwest Grove really had a lot of problems dealing with that over there. So it's really nice. It's a shocking appearance. When you go to the Lowell store on the north side and I talk to the managers, they cannot believe the impact that it changed it so quickly and the business is over there. So thank you, the city, City Council for getting that done. Police Department and all the agencies. But anyway,
Thank you.
I'm for the ordinance. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishes, wishes to speak in favor of the ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone wishing to speak against the ordinance?
Please state your name for the record.
Elvis Martinez. Okay, I was talking with somebody over the past couple of weeks and this individual said a ban without a plan won't work. What is plan B two? Our elected leaders. And then about this no camping ban, uh, how will this fully be enforced? Because as Chief Knoller has stated, I think the last time he said we're down about maybe fifty-three, fifty-four officers. I may be mistaken, but it's around there or so. I, I don't know the exact number as of today. But over the past month, since this has been brought up, I have contacted city elected leaders out in Canyon City. They have a no camping ban. Not enforced. I have spoken to a council member in Aurora, Colorado. It's not really enforced. They are down nearly ninety-five officers and have spent over two million dollars of their city taxpayers' money. And tomorrow, I'm getting a phone call from the mayor of Aurora to speak on this because hi- his chief of staff or secretary, whatever her job title is, she called me today because I left a voicemail. Moving on. Will you be willing to change the no camping ban to say, for example, because it could be modified on the spot, say there can't be any tents within two hundred feet of waterways? That's just an example to give you guys. And it was brought up last month with, uh, Counselor Martinez saying to, uh, Ms. Mastry, if we could have that housing, uh, the Homeless and Housing Commission to talk about this. I didn't see them get brought forward, nor did I see Posada get brought forward. So where are you planning to put the unhoused? Have you spoken with the sheriff or police chief on how this would be enforced? How will they pay the tickets? With what money? Uh, the county jail is for felonies only and we have very few beds for petty crime. Being unhoused isn't a crime. Why wait, uh, nearly two years after being elected to introduce such a ban? Does any council member have a background in addiction or mental health? Because most of these people have some mental health issue, rather be PTSD and we have some veterans on council. You guys want to do this to your fellow brothers and sisters? I don't agree. If, if you claim to be an advocate for all life, then how are you an advocate for an ordinance like this targeting those who are struggling? The unhoused population are also your constituents. Just like the kids in college, how Mr. Flores said earlier, they're still your constituents because they live in the city. What is your plan to maintain all of the officers this year, plus at least hire thirty officers? Since we are down nearly sixty. And we have a no littering ordinance. That isn't enforced. We have a no loitering ordinance. That's not enforced. And what is the cost of this enforcement? And if you want to put them in jail, how much does it cost per day, per inmate to house them? Because we're, we're paying that. And it's also an added cost if they need a daily medication, rather whatever that may be, or two medications. You have to give them what they need like that. And let me run down a few numbers right here. So in Canyon City, I spoke to Didi Clemmons with, uh, Loaves and Fishes. And as of December thirty first, and you, you guys might want to write this down for reference. There are three returning from housing to homelessness, a hundred and nine single adults, four veterans, four youth, and their classification of youth is eighteen to twenty-four. And then right here, these are twenty-five adults right here, which are individuals or couples. Along with that, there are forty-three kids within those twenty-five adults. Eleven are not completely verified status and seven homeless don't want housing. And the, the one lady that works with Ms. Didi Clemmons is Jennifer Goshey, G O S H A Y. And her job title is Entry System Program Manager. How, how they do this is every month, the, they, they talk all the homeless and break them into groups. That's what Pueblo needs to do. Okay, and uh, as of twenty seventeen, I have stats right here. There were four hundred and fifty homeless individuals. I don't know the breakdown on that right there.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Against this ordinance?
You say your name for the record?
Hi, I'm Dr. Jonathan Emmaheiser. Can everyone hear me? All right, sweet. I've got a frog in my throat. So I'm a family medicine resident here in Pueblo. I've been here for the last two years. Since April of two thousand twenty-three, I've been providing street medicine with a group of volunteers called Project Apollo. Essentially, we perform house calls to the unhoused and we distribute survival supplies to our unhoused neighbors. I do not support the camping ban. Let me tell you why. In my day job as a doctor, I do my best to help my patients to avoid health problems, both in the present and especially in the future. Unfortunately, many of my, many of my patients, but especially the unhoused, suffer from diseases that could have been managed much more effectively if caught early on. Missing the opportunity to give a bit of antibiotic or a blood pressure medication or counseling on quitting smoking can mean the difference between thousand dollar a day hospital stays and a healthy life. Something that goes even further than medication is shelter. Doesn't matter what kind of shelter, it just needs to be out of the elements. One of the most basic aspects of human survival is simply being able to get out of the cold, get out of the wet. I think it goes without saying that jeopardizing what little semblance of a home the unhoused have is going to have adverse health effects. Things like frostbite and hyperthermia aside, when my patients do not have stable housing, reliable storage for medications, or even a reliable place that I can find them, preventing them from having expensive medical costs, which are then passed on to taxpayers, becomes incredibly difficult. Many studies which I've provided for you and your emails have demonstrated that camping bans and homeless sweeps have devastating effects on these people's health and wellness. I would like to point out the fact that someone felt the need to study the effects of somehow making the lives of people who, that were already incredibly difficult, somehow more difficult to see how that affected their health. It, it's, it's a blatant abuse of logic and taxpayer money, but some people need more evidence to be convinced. I've been engaged in working with the unhoused in communities all over the country over the last decade or so. I've had to personally deal with the consequences of seeing people lose what little shelter they have. If you don't have time to read the studies, as I have, I would invite you to rely on my experience and expertise. In closing, the camping ban being proposed to the city council is going to result in harm to members of this community. My job, the job of doctors, is to deal with that harm and it is hard enough as it is. Please do not make more work for us. If you are interested in making our job easier, Project Apollo would be happy to work together with city council to provide a reasonable solution to this problem. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak against this ordinance?
Hi, my name is Jenny Paulson. I, um, didn't plan on speaking tonight. However, I was led to speak about legal issues. I have been an activist here in Pueblo about a decade. We have come regularly until COVID and recently we have spoken with council. When this town had absolutely no shelter, council choked up some money and put it into the shelter. A homeless commission was established and I did find the homeless commission on the city's website. There was to be $24 million dedicated to homeless and housing in the last four out of five years. The city is now in violation of the Open Records Act. We have spent an entire month asking for a single spreadsheet, a click of a button. And Colorado law states that an hour is free for Open Records Act. The city is saying they're going to have to go through invoice after invoice and charge us citizens and activists $700 to figure out where $24 million went. Now, I spent the last few months interviewing homeless and Mayor Gradishar mocked me in front of council several weeks ago when you were first proposing this ordinance. And I asked if you were going to continue bulldozing down homeless camps. Now, the city attorney that was fired by Mayor Heather Graham made it clear to council that it is illegal to do homeless sweeps without enough beds. He made it clear that the mission does not have enough beds to make up for the number of homeless. Now, one of you on council, I believe it was Flores, said you estimate six to seven hundred homeless. We beg to differ. We think there's well over a thousand, maybe closer to 2,000 homeless people. Rent has gone up in Pueblo. There's hardships. There's mental illness. We have a fentanyl problem that's beyond belief. And in interviewing the homeless in a series for Pueblo Independent News on Facebook, which has garnered 29,000 people, we can't find a homeless person that can come up with any ideas on what you did with the $24 million. They're familiar with Colorado Springs. They're familiar with Denver. Some of them, like me, sit on their phones and watch homeless news all over the nation. Now, Mr. Hippolyte, who was fired, did explain the law to you guys. And, um, I asked homeless people, and I've probably interviewed over fifty, um, for a series of articles I'm working on. And I did find out Pastor Paul, Pastor Tammy, um, Janet Wilson, a fellow activist bought land and asked, uh, Mr. Gradishar and you for financing for tiny homes for vets. So there has been definitely people asking for funding and wanting to help, all of whom have been turned down on any significant amount of money who want to help the homeless. Now, um, I think our findings are that a lot of homeless are on, uh, fentanyl and drugs. That, uh, probably the hotel was shut down, um, was for many reasons. And they are speaking to me very openly about what is going on in our community. But we do have laws to follow. I'm not against, um, the idea that, uh, homeless should not be vagrants around town begging for money and, um, having issues. We do have a shortage of police officers and I do have a little side gig delivering around town. And most of the stores are saying the cops don't show up. It's two to three hours later, if you're lucky. And so the stores and the hotels have gone to hiring their own security guards, one hotel to the extent of $80,000 a year. Now, the city is paying a tax for officers to be fully staffed. And we understand there is an issue with police officers quitting. You guys talk about lack of recruitment. They're quitting within a month or two because of management and poor morale and things going on.
Stay on the, the, the actual ordinance is on a camping.
And the, um, hotels and the stores are complaining about homelessness and people hanging out. And the city isn't handling it, so we are going to security guards. As far as the homeless ban goes, Mr. Hippolyte referred to Boulder and the new city attorney, um, conflict of interest judge, um, stated that he used other cities as an example, saying it's legal. Well, I did Google Boulder, Colorado, um, which Mr. Hippolyte talked about. In fact, they're in year four of being sued by the ACLU and they're in the national news for how illegal the camping ban ordinance is in Boulder, the one that your former city attorney modeled this one after. They're in the national news because it's been precedent, especially Martin, Boise, Idaho, and now Boulder. And it's set precedents all over the nation that you cannot be cleaning up and doing sweeps. Now, the history is the October before last, Mr., uh, the police chief sent his cops in the city out to bulldoze down homeless by Target. The homeless are used to camping on the river. They are now spread out all over town. And even a fire commander one day said they had less trouble when the homeless were on the river. And now we have fires all over town. I am against.
Paulson, your time is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for talking. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak against this ordinance, sir? Thank you for coming.
Hello, my name is Jimmy Dufner, and thank you for seeing me. Ladies and gentlemen, and members of the LGBTQIA+ community, if you work in the unhoused community, it's likely you or some of your colleagues know me. I am here begging you for your help to find just solutions to this crisis in cooperation with you. The statute of liberty, give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses, yearning to breathe free. The wretched refugees of your teeming shore, send these, the homeless tempests tossed to me. Matthew twenty-five, then the righteous will answer him, Lord, when did we see you hungry and feed you or thirsty and give you something to drink? When did we see you a stranger and invite you in or needing clothes and clothe you? When did we see you sick or in prison and go and visit you? The king will reply, truly, I tell you, whatever you have done for one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you have done for me. I am opposed to this ordinance. I believe this ordinance will cause more suffering and death for humans experiencing homelessness here in our great city. Living these man-made shelters and tents gives the homeless human beings constituents some protection from the elements. It was stated in the chieftain recently by one of the council members that we have enough beds for the 700 to 1,000 unhoused people in Pueblo. And I agree with that young lady. There are more. That is a very low estimate of the number of unhoused constituents that live here. Affordable housing is a systemic problem. The Eighth Amendment to the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights protects against excessive bail, fines, and cruel or unusual punishment. In 2018, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals ruled that criminalizing camping on public property is cruel and unusual punishment. The court ruled that punishing homeless people for public camping violates the Eighth Amendment's ban on cruel and unusual punishment if they do not have access to shelter elsewhere. The Ninth Circuit Court ruling is consistent with decades of Supreme Court precedent. Council member Joe Latino and I have discussed employing the unhoused to clean up their camps and, um, Pueblo, which will address the environmental, the environment and lift people up instead of putting them down. I beg you to reconsider this and find humane solutions to address this crisis with us that is spreading in our city. And I want you to remember the last phrase of the pledge of allegiance of the United States of America. Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak against this ordinance? Welcome.
Hello. No, it's good, but go ahead and state your name.
Hello, my name is Crystal Archuleta. I'm originally from Denver, but have called Bessemer my home since moving to Pueblo in 2012. I have been doing street-based outreach for the last 10 months, primarily with women who have been or currently unhoused. Tonight, I speak on behalf of the unheard, silenced, and forgotten voices of the unhoused members of our community. But also from experience, in opposition of the proposed camping ban, I was unhoused for five years in Pueblo after unexpectedly losing my job, my home, and ultimately my children went to go live with their dad. I lost everything and everyone. Without my children, no home and no hope of a solution, I was lost. I went from being a mom to nothing, to no one, in what seemed like a blink of an eye. I became one of the forgotten. Every day of those five years was a struggle, sometimes just to stay alive. I would call myself blessed as I had a reason to wake up every day and endure the struggle and fight for reunification with my children. I dreamed, I wished, I prayed, and I fought to one day have all of my children back under one roof together. Sadly, this dream will never come true. My oldest children grew up in those five years and became amazing young men. I was, however, able to find a place that accepts women with their children, for myself and my daughter, to move in together after five years of not giving up and continuing to ask for help. The whole time being told there is no housing available to me or my daughter. I didn't meet the requirements. The waitlist was unavailable. I didn't have the documents needed to apply, like a state issued ID or birth certificate. There always seemed to be an excuse not to help us. Most people who haven't lived the true horror of being unhoused do not understand or take for granted having things like a state issued ID, your own birth certificate, a mailing address, or even a phone. All of those things are almost impossible to hold on to as an unhoused person, which makes applying for housing, getting a job, or renting a home out of reach. No matter how hard you work, prior to becoming unhoused, I was a wife, a mother, a nurse with a home, a family. My story is mine, but just one of thousands who struggle, living to the best of their means. Homelessness is not a choice. No one wants to live in a tent, freezing, hungry, and afraid. Lastly, I would like to ask what ideas or solutions that can be given to a street-based outreach worker with lived experience like myself or anyone willing to help with the epidemic of homelessness, exactly how we could work harder to resolve homelessness? Because I'm not sure how I could work any harder than I already do with little to no funding. I do know passing the proposed camping ban is not the solution for our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak against this ordinance?
Hello, I'm Sam Chambers. So in my present position, um, I work for a local area nonprofit. And in my present position, I get names off what's called the coordinated entry by name list. These are names of street-bound homeless people. And I, I walk along beside them as, as we go through the journey of them becoming housed. Once they're housed, I provide them support. Okay? Now, this is a great answer. It's a beautiful thing. We, you know, right now I have seventeen people out there that, that have walked beside me that are now housed. And that's just been since, you know, March of last year. Now, that's all a great idea, but that's not the answer and that's not going to work. There's never going to be enough houses. There's never going to be enough vouchers. If you really want to get at the heart of homelessness, which I believe, um, after my experience to be mostly substance abuse and mental health, then you're going to have to do what Dr. John and company are doing. You're going to have to go down there and talk to these people and ask them questions. You know, how did you get here? What happened? What resources it does this person need? And they're all different. What, what resources does this person need to motivate them to get themselves up out of this situation? To move themselves from the riverbank to, and, um, I always come back to mental health. We need to promote and enroll these folks in mental health services and addiction services. You know, when I see homeless people, I see a whole lot of physical health. They can all be considered malnourished. I mean, they're all improperly nourished anyway. They eat ramen noodles, you know, probably thirteen times a week. The camps have been cleared before. I mean, they were flooded twice, right? They were flooded twice this year and there's still as many people down there as before the flood. So telling them to go away and moving the camps ain't working. You know, that's just not, that's just not hap- happening. What we need is we need direct services directly to these people. Um, we have some folks that are doing it. We have the Apollo Project. Um, we have Health Solutions. We have a couple of harm reduction clinics that are, um, helping directly. And we have the Green Chili Bike Bank in the shelter. So we have some, we have a good start. We have some folks out there willing to help. Um, I just feel that the, the best answer is mental health. Um, if you can get somebody's mental health cleared up, you know, that things will work out for them. Things will be better for them. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak against this ordinance?
Hello.
Welcome.
My name is Michael Gonzalez. I'm here to talk about the camping ban. I was currently homeless for two years. Now I got my life back on track. I went homeless due to a bad divorce that left me with nothing. I was a good husband. I own my own business. I was a good husband. I own my own business in Denver, Colorado. It shows you how quick your life can change in a blink of an eye. I had nowhere to go. I seen a childhood friend that introduced me to this place called The Jungle. It's a homeless camp where my life changed. The Jungle taught me how to survive with nothing. It taught me how to be mentally and physically strong. It taught me to be humble and to appreciate everything I have, even the simplest little things like a hot shower. I also met a lot of good people that were broken, good and bad people. I tell you, tell you the truth. There's no mailing. I never had a mailing address. It was hard to get a social security card, a birth certificate. I have a lot of ideas to share because I know the pain. I was with them through the hot summers and the cold winters. To some people, this is their last resort in life. I feel like if you take away their homes and give them a fine, it's going to make them more stressed out. They have enough to worry about. I feel the crime rate will go up. There's going to be more people in the public and a lot of complaints. I feel like the experience I went through gave me the determination to help them. I got to know a lot of these people and their stories. And being homeless just opened my eyes a lot, and I just want to take action and help these people out. And, and just, just help them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak against this ordinance?
My name is Thomas Elliott. I live on the east side. So Joe Latino, you're my neighborhood guy. I am not an activist. I'm an engineer. And it seems to me like the problems that people have brought up here that are, are being blamed on and caused by homeless folks are not being caused by the fact that they are living in tents. There are things like the number of needles that are being found around the city. As an engineer, if you've got a waste product that's being generated, the thing that you should first look to do is find a way to safely store it. And so we have that. It's called Sharps containers. They're readily available. And, and so I am not sure I've ever seen a publicly available Sharps container in Pueblo. I've seen some shops and bars and restaurants that have made them privately available. But I have never seen, for example, a public trash can that has a Sharps container attached to it. And I think that if those were made widely available, I mean, like homeless people don't want to be walking on needles. They'd rather get rid of them safely. I think everyone would prefer that. And I think that would be a simple, easy-to-implement, permanent infrastructure that would just readily alleviate that particular aspect of the problem. And I think that that's generally the approach that should be taken to trying to alleviate these problems. Like I know folks mentioned earlier, people urinating or defecating in public. How many public restrooms do we have? How much would it cost to install one of those versus how much would it cost to enforce this ban? And again, those are permanent resources that once we put them into place, the initial cost is, you know, a certain amount, but then maintenance is much lower. And so I think that rather than trying to treat something that's only tangentially related to the actual problems that people are upset about, rather than directly addressing the problems themselves, isn't, isn't going to work. And to the degree that it might work at all, it's going to be incredibly inefficient. And so I think it would be much better for everybody to simply provide more of these simple, proven, readily accessible to, you know, to y'all to purchase resources. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak against this ordinance?
My name is Nikki. I'm thirty-two years old and a mother of two. I moved to Colorado at the end of 2019 from Iowa. When I moved here, I left about everything behind, including my two kids. I never wanted my kids to even have to experience having to camp before they understood, never sleeping outside unless by choice. But in reality, I was experiencing it myself. I was out here the first two years with just myself and my wife. I went home to surprise my daughter for her eighth birthday, but the bigger surprise was to me, me bringing her back out here with me with nowhere to take her. So we ended up at the Value Stay, no place for an eight-year-old little girl. We stayed there for a year while my daughter went to school. Definitely not an easy task or a place to raise a child. After a year of not getting any help, not having enough money or the resources to help, we got evicted with nowhere to go. And a week before Christmas, we ate from dumpsters and someone I didn't even know bringing me Christmas presents on Christmas Eve, so my daughter had presents to wake up to Christmas morning. While we were moving, her presents had gotten stolen. Never in a million years did I ever see myself being that mother, and I was. We lost a lot of belongings. We lost hope with no help. I made sure my daughter had food, water, and a warm bed to go to sleep in every day. The police came and took her. Me and my wife were sleeping in a tent. I couldn't do that to my daughter. I never wanted my daughter to misunderstand the meaning of camping. Because I had no help, I lost my daughter all because I didn't have her with me. I walked back and forth two miles to make sure she was okay. Colorado didn't care about any of that. I had her dad drive all night to come and get her, so I didn't lose her to the system out here. It's been over a year since they took her, almost eleven months, living in a tent in a place they call The Jungle. I never understood how people did it, but I have learned to understand the emotions that actually come with this lifestyle. Stories don't do any justice. Living it, that's a, that's a whole experience that you can't just make up. To some, it's camping. To others, it's home. Everything I have said is from my real-life story. I'm against this ban. If you follow through with this, everyone who's already homeless will be stuck. Think of everything that will be lost, everything you've gained just gone, starting over right back at square one when you have nothing, losing hope, losing faith. You're taking homes from people that that's all they've known. They lose their security, they lose their privacy, and they lose their trust. Before taking something that you know nothing about, walk a mile in our shoes, fully know what you're banning, understand from our points of view, live our lives, just like we honestly would love to live in yours.
Is there anyone else like to speak against this ordinance?
Hello again. My name is Velma Campbell, and I'm speaking at this point in my, as a professional practicing medicine here in Pueblo since 1988. My specialty is public health, although in my first residency was in family practice, and I really respect and admire my colleague who spoke earlier. I think as we approach this, this particular ordinance, I think the question that all of us are asking and that I hope the council members are asking yourselves is what does this do to improve the problem? And more particularly, what does this do to improve the situation and a lot of those in our community, our neighbors who are confronted with unhoused status? And we all know, and I've mentioned it before in hearings in, before this council, Maslow's hierarchy of need, of which housing is one of the most basic. If I were seeing a patient for strep throat, antibiotics would be the treatment. If somebody came with appendicitis, surgery is indicated. If malnutrition is the option, is the problem, food is the treatment. And if housing or lack of it is the problem, then housing is the treatment. I'm concerned about this particular ordinance because it's already unlawful, as several people have mentioned, to camp or even put up a tent in this public park without permission. So what is this ordinance accomplishing? It's adding insult to injury. In fact, it may actually, and I'm not sure I would, I'm not the legal advisor, but this ordinance would prohibit the use of temporary structures for housing on public property. Would this actually interfere if the city decided to put up short-term housing? I mean, I, I don't, I, like Mr. Garcia, I don't particularly like the sheriff that he referenced, but the idea of a tent community or a cubicle community or tiny house community on some of the large areas of open space that we have available in this community is one step towards addressing the basic problem of a lack of place for people to go when they do want to go somewhere. Yes, there will always be a small percentage of folks that are, that are resistant to assistance, but that's a small percentage even among the unhoused population. And so I'm hoping that this council will withdraw this resolution or vote it down and work with those of us in the community who are more than willing to sit down and spend time working with you for real solutions. Our neighbors deserve better. Pueblo deserves better.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this ordinance?
My name's Allison Ray. Congratulations, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I chose to make my home in Pueblo because I was impressed by its community-minded residents. The people of Pueblo care for their neighbors and have a sense of camaraderie very rarely seen outside of small towns, which is why it's so disappointing to see that we're proposing a deeply uncompassionate and un-Christian ban on camping. People who are living in tents by the river generally don't have a thousand dollars on them. You can't get blood from a turnip. You won't collect these fines. We'll be spending police salary, judge salary, maybe correctional officer salary if they end up arrested for being homeless. These services are expensive, and spending on them doesn't help anyone become stable and productive. Denver has passed a camping ban similar to this one, and the number of people who are homeless in Denver has gone up since that time. Some of you have stated a concern for contamination of public waterways and wild spaces and unsafe fires. Instead of spending on arresting people, you could provide a common infrastructure such as those grills you see at parks where you can put your charcoal in it and start a fire safely. You can add a public restroom, something you frequently see at parks funded by the city for the public good. If you're concerned about waste disposal, you can add trash cans. You could even work with Pastor Paul to offer people jobs cleaning up trash. We also don't have space to house everyone in the Pueblo Rescue Mission at the moment. And even if they did have room there, that's congregate housing. And for the twenty-seven percent of homeless people that have PTSD, they are not well-served by congregate housing. They have a need to be alone and find quiet and peace, as we all do sometimes. This ban is equivalent to a fine for the crime of being homeless. It's an inhumane waste of money. These are our neighbors. These are your constituents. Find better solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak against this ordinance?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Riley Toronto, and I am here with Project Apollo, a mutual aid group based I'm hearing, okay, there we go. Thank you to who was helping me. Okay. We'll start again. Hello, my name's Riley Toronto, and I'm here with Project Apollo, a mutual aid group based here in Pueblo to speak about the consequences that urban camping bans have proven to have on vulnerable communities and their access to necessary services. I would first like to address the fact that using veterans in our city's status as the home of heroes to attack the unhoused population as if this doesn't directly impact us veterans is disgusting. And the gentleman who mentioned it earlier should be embarrassed and ashamed of such a ridiculous leap in logic. Now, while it's been claimed that this ordinance is meant to address environmental concerns and not to target the homeless, that is exactly who will be harmed and targeted by this ban. Despite claims that bans on urban camping will lead to an increase in services, evidence has consistently shown the opposite to be true. According to research from our own University of Colorado and Schutz Medical Campus, the involuntary displacement of unhoused people could lead to a fifteen to twenty-five percent increase in mortality over just ten years. In fact, of the hundreds of scenarios that were modeled in this study, there was not a single one where the population was positively affected by these outcomes. According to Lauren Dunton, who research, researches, rather, homelessness for the federal government, quote, "In some communities, outreach workers are spending months building relationships. And if encampments are displaced quickly, then these groups often lose track of where these people have gone, and those relationships are broken, and then they can't work to get them into housing anymore." I am appalled at the lack of empathy that I have seen on display from members of this city council as well as our community. You are putting the interests of business and the dirt atop which they live ahead of the very lives of some of your most vulnerable constituents. For those in our city and on this council who say that they shouldn't have to see unhoused people, I urge you to simply look the other way like you have so far. Make no mistake, this ordinance, if passed, will not only create additional barriers to service, but it will leave behind a body count. It will leave behind a trail of bodies that members of this council have deemed unworthy of even the most basic humanity, respect, or empathy. Councilwoman Maestri was quoted in the Pueblo Chieftain as stating that she was elected to protect the environment, but I am here to remind the entire council that you were also elected to serve the people of Pueblo, and that includes your unhoused neighbors and your constituents, period. Rather than implementing punitive policies that are going to cost this city even more money to enforce and directly harm our most vulnerable community members, I urge you all to vote no on this ban and instead seek solutions that do not involve criminalizing our neighbors. If cleaning the area and keeping our environment is truly what you're concerned about, then I hope that you consider some of the wonderful ideas proposed tonight, such as that by Pastor Paul Montoya. That's all I have.
Is there anyone else who wish to speak against this ordinance?
Yes. Hi, my name is Dr. Alexandra Kellogg, and you guys have heard from me. You've heard my impassioned speech and my feelings about this, but I'm going to kind of approach you a different way. I am a physician. I'm an attending physician here in Pueblo, the kind of people I think you're hoping to invite to this community. I just moved here recently, and I chose Pueblo. I had job offers all over Colorado. I chose Pueblo specifically, okay? So I want you to know that people are coming, and it's not for the reasons you're thinking. The problems with this is the evidence proves that this is not going to work, and it's going to cost all of us, the city, the taxpayers, and especially the unhoused, a lot of money. This is a, I brought some articles. I've read over four hundred pages of research articles because I'm a nerdy science kid. That's what I do. And if you want copies, I can send them all to you. It's just a lot of time. So this is a research article done after Denver passed its camping ban. I'm going to read you from this. Although there has been a reduction in outdoor sleeping among residents, the decline is slight. Before the camping ban, seventy-two percent of respondents say they sometimes or always slept outside. After the ban, sixty-four percent report the same. Only eight percent of respondents report that they used to sleep outside frequently. So in other words, eighty-nine percent of respondents who slept outside before the ban still sleep outside regularly. So not very effective. Another research article. In a survey by San Francisco Coalition on Homelessness, and this was after a camping ban was put into effect there, ninety-one percent of respondents who had been told to move out of public space simply moved to other public spaces, didn't really do much for the issue. If we look at the costs, this is taken directly from the Too High a Price. I don't know if you've read this. It's a great article. What Criminalizing Homelessness Costs Colorado. It was specifically done focusing on Colorado. Incarcerating someone for one day in the Denver jail cost the public fifty-three dollars and sixty-four cents. An average per citation cost, and this is for anti-homeless ordinances, cost two hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. That was one anti-homelessness incarceration cost. If we look at the camping ban in Denver over four years, it cost the city seven thousand six hundred twenty-three dollars to enforce. In Boulder, over the same four-year period, the camping ban cost nine hundred forty-six thousand dollars, four hundred fifty-seven, no, nine hundred forty-six hundred thousand dollars, four hundred fifty-seven and twenty cents. In Colorado Springs, the camping ban cost in four years $51,142.58. In Fort Collins, $515,686,000. And in Grand Junction, $1,680. So if we want to pass this, this is going to cost all of us quite a bit of money. In Denver, over the study of one year, Denver spends an average of $35,000 a year on one chronically homeless individual. You want to talk about solutions? Because none were proposed. If you're going to propose something, I would like solutions. So I have some. If we look at the Housing First Initiative, which has been proposed by the National Institute, the National Coalition Against Homelessness, Housing First is proven to work. Where's my infographic? If we look here, which can't see very well, but this is the cost in central Florida of how much money is saved just by causing Housing First. You actually save money by giving residents houses. Let me go into detail on that. Providing, one study found an average cost savings on emergency services. So my job, because I'm a physician, these are the people I see. The savings of $31,545, no, $31,545 over the course of two years. So by housing, people didn't, didn't cost taxpayers $15,000 of money a year per homeless person housed. Another study showed that a Housing First approach can cost up to $23,000 less per consumer per year than a shelter program. So if you want to talk solutions that are effective, even about the environment, as a hippian environmentalist, I also love that, but let's talk about things that will actually work, will not cost us all money, and will be effective in solving the problems that we all agree upon. Thank you.
Thank you. There what? Anyone else wishing to speak against this ordinance?
Hi, my name is Jordan Meekum, and I'll be quick. How do you get satisfaction out of torturing and harassing and belittling and poking and stabbing at the people who have nothing? Who everything has been taken from? I wonder what you would be like if you had nothing and everything was taken from you. You have no idea what it's like to have everything taken from you, and then because you have nothing, be treated like you're nothing. And our houseless neighbors are more than that, and you do not have the right to treat them like they're nothing, let alone profit off of their plight. These bans have unanimously are not effective to address houselessness and make outreach and engagement with unhoused more difficult. A quote from a Denver law professor really sums up the true issue with this amendment. I think it stems from, stems from people who are very uncomfortable with visible poverty. Until we sort of grapple with that, I think we're going to see a lot of outcry from people saying, do something about this. And it's easier to pass an ordinance and criminalize it than to actually find ways to help people who are unhoused. I want to remind you that everyone in this room is so much closer to losing everything, living on the streets, being targeted by this exact ordinance than we will ever be to being millionaires, let alone billionaires. Redefine your idols, because they are the ones that keep us all with the boot on our necks. Use our taxers to slaughter hundreds of thousands of Palestinians and demonstrate tyrannical resolutions like this to keep us in line. Free Palestine, no camping ban.
Does anyone else like to speak against this resolution?
Good evening. My name is Cora Cole. I am a resident of District One. I have been living in Pueblo for six years now. I originally came to Pueblo because of my own experience of being unhoused. I was very fortunate to have enough income and support from my family at the time that I got to live in extended stay hotels and camp in actual campsites during the four months that I looked across Colorado and New Mexico to find housing before I finally found a landlord and an affordable enough home to move to Pueblo. In the time since then, I started volunteering to provide direct services and eventually moved into formal sexual health provision out of Southern Colorado Harm Reduction Association. I have been working and volunteering out of that location and in nearby areas in the neighborhood since 2020. I have heard a collection of horrific stories from the people who I provide services to, mostly unhoused women. Terrible stories of violence, both sexual and otherwise. Terrible stories of how they became houseless to begin with. Many of these are older women whose husbands died. Many of them are mothers who have been separated from their children because of domestic violence. And while people are living outside, they are at extraordinary risk of violence, more than they are a risk to other people. I haven't heard anyone tell me that there is anything less than a two-year waiting list for housing. I don't know where we're expecting them to live until then, if not in the same extended stay hotels that people were so bold to celebrate being shut down here tonight. As the cost of living in places like this can be as much as $800 a week, if not more. So I have personally experienced having to do the math is everything that I could have to go towards move into a house going to stay at this hotel. You know, people are making difficult choices every day. Nobody's out camping in the winter because they think it's fun. Nobody is choosing not to take advantage of the services that are available. They're terribly underfunded. The outreach that Crystal mentioned that we work on together has a budget of less than $3,000 a year. When I look at the city budget to try to figure out how much the city itself is spending on housing, the only housing specific line on the budget I can see sits here at $589,788. The only other housing specific section I could find in the budget was approximately $2 million. Those two line items combined are about what we're spending to maintain our golf courses a year. In contrast to our $34 million police budget, which out of what appears to be about $134 million budget, this is not a problem for the police to solve. This is a problem that needs to be solved with resources specifically allocated to support people in gathering housing. So for example, we've talked a lot about what hasn't worked, which is camping bans. Of what we do see almost universally work across the country are measures like universal basic income. So for the low, low price of $6 million, we could provide either lump sums of $6,000 to 1,000 people to access housing or $500 a month sums to that same number of approximately 1,000 people for a year to help support their access to housing. And of speaking of things that we should actually be outraged about, let's talk about Renee Marie Portillo, the woman whose hand was found in the pocket of a security guard who was suspected to be a serial killer who dumped her dismembered body over the Cesar Chavez Bridge. I have heard escalating reports of serial killers and rapists specifically targeting houseless women. This is the outrage that we need the police for in this community, not to try to remove people to no alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this ordinance?
Good evening, council members. This is Mayor. My name is Jamie Valdez. I am a Pueblo native, lived here all my life. And I am a state manager for an organization called Mothers Out Front, which is a climate justice organization where we work for the goal of a livable climate for all children. We are very much environmentalists, and I'm thrilled to hear about all this concern for the environment because anytime we come up here and want to talk about how the Comanche Plant, for example, according to the Colorado Public Utility Commission, is the state's number one source of planet warming CO2, or we try to talk about the fact that according to the EPA, that plant is Pueblo's number one source of toxic air pollutants, responsible for up to 84% of Pueblo's toxic air pollutants. That's from the EPA's toxic release inventory. So and, and when we talk about the Fountain Creek, I don't, I rarely ever hear anyone talking about the fact that the Fountain Creek is, is rated as impaired in all of its regulatory sectors for either E. coli or selenium or both. I also never hear anyone talk about the fact that the Fountain Creek is one of Colorado's most highly contaminated bodies of surface water with the highly toxic forever chemicals PFAS. These are called forever chemicals because they are bioperosistent and bioaccumulative. That means they continue to accumulate in our bodies and the environment over time with, with continued exposure. These chemicals are linked to multiple cancers, endocrine disruption, low birth weights, and multiple other health issues. This, this pollution was caused by Peterson Air Force Base and the Air Force Academy using AFF firefighting foams, which contain these PFAS chemicals, not by the homeless. The pollution being put in the Fountain Creek by the homeless, or there is no pollution really being put in the air by them, except maybe cigarette smoke that comes from a lot of other people too. But the, the pollution being put in the Fountain Creek by the homeless is minimal and compared is negligible. In fact, compared to the pollution being put there by our military and by corporations. So when we're talking about camping bans, what's that actually going to help? I, for several years, I and my team led creek cleanups along the Fountain Creek. Did we find needles? Absolutely. I find them every day when I walk my dog. But how exactly is banning camping going to help that? That's a problem of addiction, not homelessness, not anything else. People that are, that are housed have problems with addiction. So it, it's not like the homeless people are the only ones out there contributing to the needle problem or any other drug-related problems. Again, this camp, this camping ban really is just a criminal, criminalization against poverty. And, and what a way to kick people while they're down. They are at their lowest. I mean, how many of us would like to be out there in the cold every night, sleeping in a tent or, or less for shelter? I don't think any of us would. We are privileged to be able to be in these warm spaces, these comfortable spaces, and have these conversations and be able to go home to the comfort of our homes. Banning camping is not going to do anything but make a bad situation for people even worse. What we need to be doing is talking about real solutions, not punishment. Punishment isn't going to get the job done. That, that's why we see our, our jails overfilled already because we're, we keep putting people in there for low-level crimes that aren't violent and, and that aren't really helping them or anyone else for that matter. And this is exactly what that's, this camping ban will do. It won't help the, the people who need it the most, the most vulnerable among us. And it's not going to help those of us who are privileged enough to sit here and talk about them as if, as if we're, we're some of them. I mean, I, I think that the, the testimonies that have been given tonight by people who have actually experienced homelessness are some of the most valuable lived experiences that, that we've heard here tonight, especially coming from someone like myself who has the compassion and the humility to work for a mother's organization where I elevate others' voices, voices of single mothers who are struggling to feed their kids and keep a roof over their heads. I mean, all of us are, are just one, well, other than those of us who are lucky enough to see money as no issue. The vast majority of us are one sickness, one illness, one injury away from being right there on the, on the streets along with these people. And then where would we be if this ban passes? It's already illegal to, to camp in the city limits or pretty much anywhere outside of designated areas. What beyond that do you plan to accomplish with this ban? I think we need to look for real solutions that are actually going to help the problem, not make it worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this ordinance?
Hi, everyone. I'm Kennedy Pew. I'm going to be really, really quick. I, one of the things that have disturbed me for a while is that people so many times often make being unhoused synonymous with being a criminal or being a drug addict. We have to truly understand that within our community, that there are several people that are students, that people who are are elderly, people who are veterans. And also, I just want to point this out real quick is that in the Chieftain today, there was an article that talked about the renters' struggle to pay rent in our community. You're going to have a lot more unhoused people on, on, in, in our community if we don't handle that. So just get ready because we need to figure out how we're going to treat our, our unhoused people equilabian properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak out against this ordinance?
Hello. My name's Jason Ford, and I've lived in Pueblo since about 2015. I moved here from Kansas, lived in Denver for about a year, and I love this city. It's an amazing city. I live just a few blocks from Benedict Park where the jungle is, and you know, I, well, let me, let me step back for a second. I have two daughters and a stepson, not grandkids, children, all 10 or under. And no matter how many needle caps I see in the parks or shopping carts that get abandoned behind my garage, it will never excuse the inhumane treatment of our fellow human beings, ever. No matter if it's for environmental reasons or whatever disingenuous reasons that like to get said, that's no excuse. This council has the power and the money to end this problem. And, you know, I hear a lot getting said about the businesses and the concerns of the businesses in this community. Well, maybe the businesses should actually pay the people of this town a livable wage instead of everybody in this town getting paid less than everybody else in the state on average. Because I know at least one of our members here today have referred to this town, certain parts of it and members of it as a blight. And the only blight I see here is poverty. Okay? You know, we're, we're, we're treating the symptoms of these problems and not the causes of these problems, and that's poverty. There, there are so many researched back solutions to this. There's no excuse to continue it at all. There's no excuse. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak against this ordinance? Saying none? Okay, saying one, we're not closed. Welcome.
Good evening. I am Reverend Gary Weaver. And I appreciate this opportunity to speak with and for my friends that don't really need my voice because I've never heard such eloquence tonight of intelligent information that is accurate, supported by data researches that tell us a lot of important points, and I want to summarize those points that these people have provided you. Number one, the homeless, the unhoused in our country are not a monolithic group. They're more diverse than even this room. Their situations as to how they became homeless are as wide as you can speak. In my work with the Faith Leaders in Action Group, some 20-plus faith leaders in our community, we are committed to homelessness, to the unhoused, to people that are in great need of resources from you, not punishment. Wherever you look in research, punitive measures to solve social issues always blow back on you. They don't work, number one, and number two, they make the problem worse. So what is the answer? Well, they've told you. Services, social services. People that are serious about the issue of unhoused people, and they want to do something about it. They want to know more about what causes homelessness. It's not all druggies and, and alcoholics. It is people in all kinds of different situations. Our group has identified at least 18 different causes of homelessness. So we've worked not only locally, but with the state legislature for matters like protections for tenants. for matters like protections for tenants, for helping out the gouging of rents on people. We've worked against the utility companies that have these high prices for utilities that's causing homelessness. Because people are renting a apartment, they can't pay their utilities, they're out on the street. It's as simple as that. So I believe, because I've worked with this council before, and we are presently engaged with the Community Commission on Homelessness and Housing. We have several members that are working with them. We have members of our groups that are working with the Pueblo Rescue Mission, with Posada, with Sister Nancy, with various agencies. And I'm so excited about some of these that I never even met and heard of. And I'm excited that we have this. You've got wonderful resources here. If anything, you ought to be inviting them to work with you to solve the problem. I would certainly welcome you to to Faith Leaders in Action. We meet every month, and we love to hear from you. And talk more seriously about how we can address the need of our homeless and unhoused people, not how we can blame them for the problem. Believe me, nobody chooses homelessness. It happens to them. And when it happens to them, what they discover is the whole system is set up to keep them there. It's an issue of obstacles that are systemic in our society, because we are not a society of compassion. We are a society of law and order and punish the bad guys. Our prisons are full of all these people that we thought were the problem, and we failed to look inside. We are the problem.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this ordinance? Okay, this hearing is closed. I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Counselor Perez?
I'll be voting against this ordinance. I'll say that first. But I've done a little bit of homework with three cities, Aurora, San Antonio, and Denver. And everywhere you look and try to find data on homelessness and the implementation of a housing ban or a camping ban, almost everyone within those communities will say all that was accomplished is moving people from one area to another with nothing being accomplished. It's very evident that this doesn't accomplish anything. But before I move on, I wanted to ask our city attorney a really important question. And if you look at the ordinance itself, we are asking our police officers to dismantle a tent or some other structure. And within the ordinance, it stipulates that we're going to give these people a chance by obtaining housing. And I think that's very, very important when it comes to the legal issue of this. Is that are we really going to give people an option for housing in Pueblo, Colorado, where none exists? We have, I mean, we're having an issue right now with just people that are looking for houses or even rentals that they can't find. So the question is, will this community be violating that ordinance itself if we implement it by indicating in the ordinance that we're giving them an option to go find a place to live when there is no place to live here? In fact, just as one example, in Aurora, they actually have made a village out of pellets, wood pellets, because that was the only way that their ban was working is by saying, well, we've got this place now. The other thing is that we're also talking about people's property. It may be the only property they have. The city Aurora also had kind of like a place where people could salvage their tent or salvage their belongings and be safeguarded in a storage building. I don't see any of that in this ordinance, and I'm concerned about that, but I'd like to hear your comments.
So the ordinance has drafted, talks about shelter, not housing. So the concept would be that as long as there is shelter available, so at the rescue mission or some other place, if there was shelter available, and they didn't take advantage of that and elected to camp instead, that they could be cited for it. It doesn't talk about housing, certainly doesn't talk about permanent housing. I don't, that's not contemplated by this ordinance.
But if you use the logic that we have maybe a hundred beds at the rescue mission and that the warming shelter can only be used with the mayor's ability to call when the temperature is down. Using that kind of logic, we know we have well over a hundred people that need a place to stay. It varies from five hundred all the way to twelve hundred. And I think those numbers are probably, you know, somewhere in between, but that's still a lot of people. So how are we going to indicate that you have a choice? Okay, we dismantle your camp, and we expect you to find a place to live where there is no place to live in this community, whether you call it a shelter, a home, apartment, whatever. And I think that would be easily provable, you know, in my mind, it would be anyway.
So from a legal perspective, the Ninth Circuit cases that dealt with this issue talked about the total number of beds versus the total number of homeless. And then the city had to prove that they had sufficient shelter for the number of homeless there. Ninth Circuit is not binding on Colorado. I did not see any binding Colorado cases on this. This is a hot topic, as we've obviously seen tonight. So I anticipate there will be more cases coming down that talk specifically about this issue. But Ninth Circuit is not binding on us. This is a very, it's an ordinance that leaves a lot of room for interpretation. It would be up to the city to prove that there was shelter available and that they chose not to take advantage of that. Now, how the city would prove that, there are several different ways, but it isn't specifically spelled out in the ordinance.
Well, the conclusion of these cities is is pretty evident that their ordinance has failed in all three of these cities in reducing the amount of homelessness people. I'm convinced of that. Thank you.
Counselor Martinez?
Thank you, everyone, for speaking today. It's rare that we get an ordinance that there's a line out the door to speak about. So I appreciate everyone's community engagement there. To expand on Counselor Flores's comment about enough shelter, I just want to make a note in the record that I think while the rescue mission tries to do a great job at serving the clients that they can, there's a lot of holes in our unhoused population seeking services there. For example, there's no partner housing, neither for heterosexual or LGBTQIA folks. There's limited beds for young people, so those under the age of eighteen. There's nowhere for them to quickly access. And of course, we know that a lot of our unhoused population has pets, and the rescue mission does not take pets unless there's inclement weather that's been declared. So there's this huge population that is not going to be able to access those housing services should they be, you know, contacted by PD to move. Secondly, I don't think that a thousand-dollar fine is going to help at all. I think it's going to perpetuate homelessness. And I think that it was well put that this is not solving homelessness by any means. It's not increasing affordable housing. It's not increasing treatment in behavioral health services. So I'm going to be voting now tonight on this ordinance, and I hope that counsel will too.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Latino?
For everyone's information here, I'm part of the Faith Leaders in Action. I have been for quite a long time. They do great things. They're wonderful people. But I'm going to say this to you. I've done my research as well. And they're doing things in other places that we're not doing here. And I proposed it earlier. This evening, Pastor Montoya came up and talked about putting them to work. Well, that was my proposal. I initiated that proposal and paying them. Okay, that happens, and it happens in other states. I know, again, I've done my research. I live on Fountain Creek. Okay? And so I know what goes on down there, and I go down there a lot. A lot. And in other places. I jog, I work out, I go down in that area. I've been there during the day. I've been there during the night. I found couches and tables and a commode in a five-gallon can. Okay? Understand this. I have a compassionate heart, but we're not helping people because they're not helping themselves. And we can put them to work. We can put them to work. They're doing that in other places, and that's my proposal. And that's where I am at this particular time. And I'm going to do what I need to do in terms of moving that forward. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Meister?
Yes, I did bring this no camping ban forward. We met with Team Up to Clean Up last week. They stated that they would put a dumpster out at some of the encampments, and people would still refuse to throw the trash away. They still had plenty of trash and debris and hazardous waste to clean up at those campsites. The roadway inn is a perfect example. It wasn't just, it was not just closed for criminal activity. It was closed because of mold and environmental issues within. So now we've got a whole hotel that has to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to rehabilitate itself, to get back into business. And then we have contribute by giving people vouchers to go and stay in these establishments, and they're falling apart. You know, without the federal funding, I just read an article on Denver doesn't have their federal funding. They're not going to get their federal funding. So the employees of the city are taking a cut in pay, and then they're having to close down the Parks and Rec Department. They have to cut back on their activities. Everybody, you know what? I've not heard from any group, nonprofit, Homeless and Housing Commission, that has come up here with a solution. They've only come up here to, they haven't come, no, they did not come up here with a solution until now that they're being bothered out there, and possibly may have to take matters into their own hands and help the houseless community. We are municipal government. We do not have the funds to house people. Yet, over the past couple of years, I've seen a lot of giveaways to nonprofits, a lot of contributions to nonprofits. And we've been doing this for quite a few years, and we're just getting bigger and bigger and bigger. So in the meantime, the public lands are being desecrated. And it will cause further, now people who aren't homeless have the opportunity to catch. Right now, airborne diseases are going through around all communities where they have large encampments in their communities. And so people who aren't suffering from homelessness are getting diseases. So I'm going to still stick with what I was elected to do, and that was to protect the public lands in this community. And that's what the environment is. It is.
It's very important that city council listen to every single person that had a say in whether they supported it or that they were against it. It is rude, and I'm not going to take it not to let councils say what they have to say without being interrupted. We didn't interrupt you. Please, please, don't interrupt us.
There are, if you do a deeper dive and you go back to the cities along the West Coast that have implemented policies and being lenient with the homeless issues, they're reversing their policies. They're tired of it. It's destroyed them. Mr. Verna was correct. Portland is like Third World country conditions. If anybody's ever visited Tijuana before, that's what the encampments start to look like around, starting around in your city. It's not clean. It's not healthy. For people who are suffering from health issues to have to live in filth in the encampments, that's not healthy either. So I'm going to still stick by my ordinance, and I'm still going to vote for my ordinance, because, you know, even our Team Up to Clean Up is ARPA funding, which once it runs out, the million dollars runs out, then we have to find another source to use it to go around and clean up trash and everything in this community. So you can all sit back and think that you know how the monies need to be spent, what they need to be spent for, how much we have. You know, there are countries that have great social programs, and yet the citizens of those countries pay forty percent tax of their income. And so this is what we do. We're up here. And this is a municipal government, and it can only serve so much. We're not an extension of the Social Services Department. We can't afford to be. And so with that being said, I'm still voting in favor of my ordinance. Thank you. I'll take responsibility for the ordinance.
Thank you, counselor. Anybody else with a?
Counselor President Alef?
I still have a statement here that I want to talk about. So in the four years I was previously on city council, I spent every ounce of my energy making a difference for the homeless community. I did everything I could do to help. I was instrumental in getting the shelter built. I was instrumental in creating the Commission on Housing and Homelessness. I care. I'm compassionate. It means something very deeply to me about being that way. But let me say something that I tried to say before. Our presuppositions take us sometimes down a road that if you don't agree with me, and I can't make you agree with me, but I see it as compassionate, that I care enough about my human neighbors, that I'm not going to let them lay out there in the wilderness like a bunch of wild animals. I'm going to do everything in my power to make sure that there are services available, that things can be done, and to get them off of those, out of that jungle. This ordinance does nothing but say, if there's room at the inn, you can go. And if you can go, you need to go, because services are available. You can't tell me services aren't available. We have a transitional shelter. And a transitional shelter will take people in and they'll move them forward. And if it's not good enough, let's build another one. Let's work together to try and make that happen. But if you think it's compassionate to allow them to live out there like that willy-nilly, that's crazy, in my opinion, and that's the presupposition that I have. My goal in this is to help people get out of the jungle or wherever it is. It's to help, not to hinder. And I hope that, I hope that you can understand how I feel about that. I hope you can understand that I will do everything over the next four years to do what I did the previous four years, and I will help. But we have to start somewhere. It's not right. It is not right the way that we do things now, and that's why I support this ordinance. Mayor Graham?
Thank you, President Alef. So I just had some questions when it comes to enforcement and procedure, because it's not outlined in the ordinance. because it's not outlined in the ordinance and how that's going to take place. So if contacted, if a, if a camp is contacted, will it be posted? Um, it doesn't say anything about whether it's posted twenty-four hours or three days. You see kind of other cities having um a timeframe on will be, how will it be posted? Um, as far as the enforcement side of it and Pueblo PD um already being so short staffed, I'm wondering how the Pueblo PD is supposed to entertain the camp, I guess, once it's posted. And then if they have to remove the camp, are they to stay there um until the camp is taken down? Um, what does that look like? Cause I don't see it outlined in the ordinance that Mr. Hippolyte um prepared. And then the shelter bed uh versus the head count is, is that also going to be something that the police department is going to have to call every time they're going to um coming up on a camp, I guess. So I'm just looking for some clarification because it's not listed within the ordinance parameters on how the enforcement piece of this is going to work. And if it will be up to the Pueblo Police Department to be calling the shelter every night. Has anybody spoken to the Pueblo Police Department on what that's going to look like? Uh, and then about the camps being posted, is that something code enforcement is going to be asked to do? And what is the timeframe in doing so?
So you, you asked about twenty questions?
Sorry. I'm just trying to.
I don't think that it's, I don't think that it's council's place to say, okay, this is exactly how it's going to be enforced. We have a police department, we have a community services, community service officers. And I think that those uh conversations need to, need to take place on how to enforce the ordinance. Ms. Sykes?
So I, I can tell you um basically how it's been done in the past. And if the chief wants to correct me, but when, when they have um contacted camps in the past, when the police department was doing activity down there like they did along the Fountain River, they would go in and they would post the property. They did it several times, they did it um ahead, way in advance um before they went in there and actually cleaned out the camps. Um, and so in those instances, they did do that. But that was a policy that was developed by the, the police department and code enforcement in conjunction and working out, trying to clean out that area so they could go in there and do work along the Fountain, Fountain River or Fountain Creek. Um, so it's not spelled out in the ordinance. At, the way I see this ordinance is, is not so much a cleaning out an entire encampment area because the police department already has um policies and procedures for doing that under the circumstances where it's needed. I saw this and I could be wrong because again, I, I didn't draft it, so I'm not sure. Um, of those instances where a single person or a couple of people are contacted on public property um where it's creating a nuisance or some sort of disturbance and then they are asked to, to leave. And in those circumstances, in order to prove that there is shelter available, someone's going to have to contact the shelter um to see if there is space available. Similarly to what the police do now, where they call and see if there's beds available at the detox center or some other place for, for these people to go. If they can get them to services, they will get them to services. And I know police department has transported people there. Um, they have arranged for rides there. So, so in order to prove that um in any kind of court case, they're going to have to show that there was some effort or some, somehow they knew that there was shelter available.
Um, Judge, I'm sorry, Ms. Sykes. Um, Mr. Hippolyte did say that the police officer was going to have to call the shelter and ask. Um, and then also that it could be immediately you need to move because the reason why they were given notice before, because they didn't have an ordinance um to support their efforts and what they were doing. So they created a policy within to do that. And so um, that's, that was our understanding of it.
And, and just so I, just to educate people if I might. Um, and I, I have no position on the ordinance one way or the other. But I wanted everybody to know that just because someone is fined does not mean they have the opportunity. They don't have the opportunity to work community service. In municipal court, every defendant has the ability to work community service to work off their fines. And they are given community service by getting their IDs, getting their social security card, by participating in drug, alcohol, mental health treatment. They are, can participate in financial counseling, they can do graffiti removal. Um, people are given community service credit for showing up for all of their probation appointments. Um, so there are ways for them to work off their fine. Um, that is community service. And if they don't have the ability to do any of those things, then they can come up with their own ways and their own community service that can be approved by the court. And so I would um encourage the groups that are here to reach out to municipal court probation and help with those programs because you guys can assist them in getting their IDs and their social security cards and, and enable them to work. Because I can tell you that is one of the biggest hurdles that we deal with. It within the court system is getting those services for people. And so I, I just wanted to put that out and educate everybody on that as well.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Latino?
I, I want to say just a few more things. Um, I, I walk and jog in that area where I live. And, and I live in that area, as I said earlier, at night I hear gunfire, boom, 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 boom. I go down there and I see the fire marshal. He comes down there with his crew from the fire department. So what are you doing down here? Said, Mr. Latino, we're, 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 we're trying to make sure that they don't drown because they get so high on drugs and things that they're not sure what they're doing. So we come down here and check all the time. So folks, we, you know, again, I have a compassionate heart. But we need to think beyond where we are as it relates to that. So I'm, I'm, am where I am with that, thank you.
Anybody else? Mayor, did you get your questions answered?
Yeah, kind of, it's.
I hear you. Okay, we'll call for the action.
Mark Alef?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
No.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
No.
Motion passes four two.
Okay, Madam Clerk, R one?
Item R one, an ordinance approving and accepting an ARPA slash SLRF and state multimodal option program funds grant Pueblo Vanpool, award number twenty-four dash HTZ, HTD dash ZL dash zero zero one two five slash four nine one zero zero three three eight five. An applicable conditions pertaining thereto between the city of Pueblo and the Colorado Department of Transportation, establishing project number PT twenty-four oh two, budgeting and appropriating funds of four hundred thousand dollars and ratifying the mayor's signature on same. Introduced January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four by Counselor Sarah Martinez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, we have a staff report.
Yes, sir, good evening, Mr. President, members of council, Mayor Graham. So this ordinance is long and well rooted. It started off with a series of meetings between the HR managers out at the industrial estate on the airport side and out on the southern industrial estate, along with some PEDCO representation from Shannon Baker. Essentially, their issues they were running into is they have a, a ready populated workforce, but they can't get them back and forth to work because they don't have reliable transportation. We as a transit agency can't run those hours because I'm federally mandated that if I'm going to run a bus somewhere, I also have to run complimentary paratransit. And the federal funds and the federal allocation just doesn't exist to make that possible. So we applied and were granted this combination state and federal multimodal grant, which will allow us to hire a, a subcontractor to run our complimentary van pool operation. Because the largest obstacle we're facing with is an hour window. Everybody who works out there are working twelve hour shifts and we just don't possess the employees to drive that many hours with a CDL to move them in a bus on our own anyway. And that's what this ordinance is and that includes staff reports and I'll take questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone that wish to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Questions? Counselor Martinez?
What are the, what's going to be the hours of operation, Ben?
So the hours of operation are going to be set by the employers because basically a partnership between them, our subcontractor and what we as the city are going to offset them with funding. We're essentially going to pay a portion of the vehicle cost and the subcontractor is going to cover the rest. The drivers will all belong to the employers themselves.
Got it.
Any other questions? Call for the action.
Mark Alef?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
Yes.
Passes six zero, Madam Clerk, R two?
Item R two, an ordinance approving and accepting a United States Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration Grant, Areas of Persistent Poverty. Award number FTA G, G dash thirty and applicable conditions pertaining thereto between the city of Pueblo and the United States Department of Transportation, establishing project number PT twenty-four oh one, budgeting and appropriating funds of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars with a local match of twenty thousand dollars and ratifying the mayor's signature on same. Introduced January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four by Counselor Sarah Martinez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, staff report?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, members of council, Mayor Graham. This is the Areas of Persistent Poverty Grant. It essentially is a planning grant for qualifying census tracts to transportation to a major employment area. The two major employment areas that were highlighted in this one were also the industrial estate in the north, the industrial estate south and a lot of the areas that are on the outlying sides of that. So this is just a planning grant that's going to tell us what is the best way to move forward and which way we would have to lean as far as for staffing and capital to make it possible to run it in a fixed route service. And that concludes staff support.
Thank you for the report. This is a public hearing, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone who'd like to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, the hearing is closed, do I have a motion to approve? Is there a second? Counselor Gomez, second? Any questions, comments? Call for the action?
Mark Alef?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
Yeah.
Passes six zero, Madam Clerk, R three?
Item R three, an ordinance approving and accepting a Colorado Department of Transportation, twenty twenty-four CTE Pueblo Transit Fleet Transition Planning Grant Award, zero two one six four seven, an applicable conditions pertaining thereto between the city of Pueblo, Colorado and the Colorado Department of Transportation, establishing project number PT twenty-four oh three, budgeting and appropriate ninety-nine thousand dollars, the local match of eleven thousand dollars and ratifying the mayor's signature on same. Introduced January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four by Counselor Sarah Martinez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and we'll keep you at the podium, huh?
Yes, sir, this will be the last one for the day. Uh, this is the first C dot CTE transition grant that was awarded. It's a fairly new program coming out of, out of C dot. Essentially, every federal grant that is coming down now for transit and buses and capital and operating requires you have a transition plan in place to go forward. So you're not just willy nilly buying whatever you're going to buy to try and make it work. It covers everything from capital to the training program, to first responder training, all the way down to employee training. And we hope to get it onboard fairly quickly with a lot of the opportunities that are coming down. And that concludes staff support.
Thank you. I want to remind everybody this is a public hearing, is there anyone that would like to speak on behalf of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone like to speak out against this ordinance? Saying none, the hearing is closed, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Flores. Uh, any questions, comments? Call for the action?
Mark Alef?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
Yeah.
Passes six zero, Madam Clerk, R four?
Item R four, an ordinance approving a lease agreement between the city of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation, the state of Colorado Department of Human Services for the premises known as Langoni Sports Complex. Introduced January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four by Counselor Sarah Martinez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, staff report, Mr. Meyer?
Yes, good evening. Uh, this is an ordinance that'll approve a lease agreement with the state of Colorado to continue operating Langoni facility. And uh, is it, we've extended the lease period uh to be made up of a ten year lease agreement. So we won't have to see it until ten years from now. That's my report.
Well, thank you. Uh, I want to remind everybody, this is a public hearing, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone who'd like to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, hearing is closed, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions? Call for the action?
Mark Alef?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
Yes.
Passes six zero, Madam Clerk, R five?
Item R five, an ordinance authorizing amendment number nineteen to the Agreement for Community Services Planning Administration Accountability Services between the city of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation, the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Pueblo, introduced January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four by Counselor Sarah Martinez.
And a staff report, Mr. Hobson?
Yes, uh, President Alef, council members, Mayor Graham. Um, this ordinance approves amendment number nineteen to the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Pueblo and Pueblo County, which provides for the administration of the Community Services Advisory Commission, CSAC. Uh, the amendment extends this agreement uh through the end of this year through twenty twenty-four. And this is an agreement that was initiated in two thousand and three. Both the city and the county have budgeted and appropriated funds for uh the year twenty twenty-four. Um, those funds are in the amount of four hundred and ninety thousand dollars each from the county and from the city. Five percent of the uh cost of the, of that's been budgeted uh can be used for administration by Pueblo County. That concludes my report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hobson, this is a public hearing, is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone like to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, the hearing is closed, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Counselor Gomez, second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Maestri. Any comments, questions? Uh, Counselor Martinez?
Are these yearly, Scott? Are these yearly IGAs? Or annual IGAs?
Uh, yes, this is a annual agreement that's approved on an annual basis. But this is for the agreement for the administration of the CSAC funds.
Good. Any other questions? We'll call for the action?
Mark Alef?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
Passes six zero, Madam Clerk, R six?
Item R six, an ordinance to approve a grant agreement between the city of Pueblo and Health Colorado Inc. for a community outreach to connect community members to community resources and acceptance of eighty thousand dollars for project, per program, project PS twenty-four oh two and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Introduced January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four by Counselor Sarah Martinez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Chief Huber?
Good evening, counsel. Um, with me this evening is Assistant Chief Fosse, he won't be speaking for this one, but for the next ordinance. Just so that you know why he's up here.
He's learning.
All right, this first ordinance is uh a grant from Health Colorado for eighty thousand dollars, established as a project and that money will go towards salaries um to work with the directing others to services programs and uh improve community outreach and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief Huber, this is a public hearing, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone who would like to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, the hearing is closed, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any questions? Call for the question?
Mark Alef?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez?
Yeah.
Passes six zero, Madam Clerk, R seven?
Item R seven, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between Colorado State Patrol and the city of Pueblo related to the use of Pueblo Fire Department Training Facilities and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Introduced January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four by Counselor Sarah Martinez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Deputy Chief, we have a staff report?
Yes, we do, uh, good evening, city council and Mayor Graham. As uh Chief mentioned, my name is Stephen Fosse, I'm an assistant chief at the, our department. This agreement is between the Colorado State Patrol Hazardous Materials Division and our department. Basically, what this does is the state patrol has several training props and nowhere to store them. Um, currently, we have very few training props as far as hazardous materials goes. And we have spaced our training facilities, so we kind of got together and uh, and bring their props in and put our facility. And we have spaced our training facilities, so we kind of got together and uh, and bring their props in and put our facility and train together. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
We have Counselor Gomez made the motion. Any questions, comments? Call for the action.
Mark Alef.
Yes.
Dennis Flores.
Yes.
Roger Gomez.
Yes.
Joe Latino.
Yes.
Regina Maestri.
Yes.
Sarah Martinez.
Yeah.
Passes six zero, Madam Clerk R eight.
Item R eight, an ordinance approving a subrecipient agreement authorizing payment in the amount of up to two hundred thousand dollars from Project CI twenty one thirteen American Rescue Plan Act to Rocky Mountain Surge Jobs for Progress Inc. For equipment and related infrastructure improvements for its empowerment center as authorized by section six oh three print C, print one, print A of the American Rescue Plan Act and U.S. Treasury Final Rule thirty one CFR thirty five dot six, print B, print three, print II, print A, print five, and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Introduced January twenty second, twenty twenty four by Councilor Sarah Martinez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. President, Members of Council and Mayor, this ordinance approves a subrecipient agreement with Rocky Mountain Surge for up to two hundred thousand in ARPA funds for the equipment and other infrastructure upgrades to Rocky Mountain Surge's empowerment center to facilitate its mobile healthy food hunger relief project. That concludes staff report.
Thank you for the report. Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Hello?
Brandy Attic, hi, I am the Director of Rocky Mountain Surge Empowerment Center. I want to thank everybody here for um, being here to support us for the last five hours. Um, so a little bit of background with Rocky Mountain Surge. Uh, we have been a nonprofit organization for the last forty years here in Pueblo. We had served Head Start families, um, so families that are below the poverty guidelines. And currently, what we are working on is our empowerment center concept that is accelerated business incubator. Um, so despite of all of the negative effects that COVID has had on Pueblo, small businesses and people, Rocky Mountain Surge was able to come to the table to be able to further provide services and programming. Um, we are able to help small businesses, nonprofits, for-profits, and organizations that are expanding out services to the Southern Colorado region. Um, so we're able to house them inside of our facility. Currently, we have over twenty five businesses that we have helped within the last year to obtain business license um, and certifications to be able to operate. We have helped over a dozen different sports teams, which include our youth as well as adult and dance um, groups that come and utilize our space in the empowerment center. Uh, we work side by side with city sales tax as well as zoning, planning, regional fire and wastewater to be able to ensure that everybody is following following guidelines that they need to be able to start and scale their business. Um, we are coming today to be able to ask for support, to be able to further this programs. Um, as you see, I had gave out this information prior to the meeting. Um, this kind of highlights four of the programs that this ARPA dollars will go to help. One is um, our Food Lab, which is in the commissary kitchen. This does directly help support food entrepreneurs to be able to legally um, have business here in Pueblo. As well as our food pantry to be able to safely provide food to all of our um, neighbors in need as well as other partner organizations to be able to transport food over to them. And then we also have a community garden that has access to anybody and everybody who eats food and which we all eat food. Um, so a lot with this program, we we are in need of support. And I do have others here to support us, and I do not want to take up all of their time for that. Um, but I will leave it up for questions after. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Hello?
Good evening, everybody. It is still evening, right? Okay. My name is Cindy Bernal. I'm the Community Outreach Coordinator for Epic Pueblo, Executives Partnering to Invest in Children. We are one of the community partners that utilizes Rocky Mountain Surge on a regular basis. Um, we have a once a month regular presentation training that is open to the community. We provide education uh, about brain development, early childhood education is and child development. Um, and also all of that child growth and development that comes with all of that. Um, we are very fortunate to be able to utilize space at Rocky Mountain Surge. And when we started this three years ago, we were averaging about eight people in attendance a month. Now we are averaging between twenty five and thirty that come on a regular basis. Um, and it's not just early childhood educators that come. We have a lot of parents. We have grandparents. We have um, a number of uh, grandparents that are part of the foster grandparent program from SRDA that has been coming for our trainings. Our trainings are approved by the Colorado Department of Education for those licensing requirements of early childhood education educators across the state as well as for foster parents, for those parents that need to have that ongoing training and education on a yearly basis. Currently, we have forty three different topics that we can present on. Um, and we present on them to a variety of audiences. And so we do have not only those typical folks that you would think, but we also have people coming from Health Solutions, from the Health Department. Um, we did a training a number, a couple of years ago for the entire staff at the DA's office to help them understand basic child development and what's appropriate for parents with children when they enter the system through their doors. So we provide a variety of resources for families. We don't charge for any of our resources at all. And the other thing that um, Epic Pueblo does to support all of these educational components is we give free books throughout the community. Um, the board pays for those. We write grants for those. And so we provide brand new free books throughout the community, and anyone is welcome to apply for them. They can go to our website and submit an application. We have a book request committee that approves that, um, looks at them and approves it and decides how much or um, if the full request can be approved or not. So we have everybody from both school districts involved, Pueblo Community College, we give regular books, the Health Department, we give the regular books. The caveat is that the books are not just to be given and handed out to parents and hope that somebody at home or in their lives reads to them. But that's why we have the educational component. So they are, there's a requirement that they need to attend or schedule a presentation with us. Um, at least two during the calendar year to require, to meet that mandate to be able to request those books. So if it weren't for Rocky Mountain Surge to give us that avenue, and we present every first Thursday of the month from five thirty to seven thirty, and we feed them a light supper, and there's no charge. And so we, we just really, really uh, appreciate everything Rocky Mountain Surge has done because not only to can people come and utilize our services that we have to offer, but then Rocky Mountain Surge has all of those other community resources right there in the building. It's, it's like our community family resource center that we can refer them to if families come to us and attendees come to us saying we need something else. So I would really thank you tonight for listening to us, as well as I would ask and invite all of you. If you have not visited the Rocky Mountain Surge, please take the time to walk through and you would be amazed at what is going on in that building. Because it's amazing, the community resources that are housed in one place. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening. How everyone, how's everyone doing tonight? My name is Shelley Ryan, and I'm one of the clients over at Rocky Mountain. If it wasn't for Rocky Mountain, my family would not be able to eat through the month. I am now a widow. My husband passed away December twenty ninth and left me a single mother of two. I have a nineteen year old daughter that is planning on to getting married this year. She moved out with her fiance, and they cannot make it. They are paying a rent and all the bills, and they both are working. I go there for the food, not just for myself, but to help them make it through their rent and make it through their bills. I go there for my son. So my son can eat a healthy meal. They serve healthy food. Yes, there's healthy food at the store, but have you guys noticed the prices of the healthy food? They are way more expensive than the non-healthy food is. I also go there, they have free cooking classes. I work three jobs. One of them's a daycare, and I take my daycare kids. My daycare kids enjoy learning to cook, learning to cut vegetables and helping in the kitchen. My daycare kids are Down Syndrome kids, so they really enjoy that. I really enjoy the services. They need this money to continue. I need them, this money for them to continue.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Yes, my name is Allison Ray. I work in the community garden at RMSCR, and I see them doing not just the community garden, but their uh, kitchen, their food pantry, their basketball classes for kids. There are so many organizations there, and it's really a wonderful asset to our community. So I urge you to vote in favor of supporting them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this?
Hi, my name is Kennedy Pew. I'm a beneficiary of Rocky Mountain Surge. I want to tell you, Rocky Mountain Surge, it is the way it's done. It is Pueblo at its best. It really is, because what happens is the community has really come together. It isn't about the empowerment of people. That's how it's done, folks. We have our company, Colorado Arts and Artists, that provides a suicide prevention play that has also provided teaching artists in the community that helps kids get music lessons and all those things. But anytime you walk through that building, I tell you, you will see kids working, playing basketball, doing music, doing uh, having uh, classes in in cooking. Um, of people lined up for the pantry and not just be being given a bag of food, but being able to shop through, given, given dignity, having, um, there's so many other nonprofits. It truly is the way it should be done in Pueblo, you all. It's about the empowerment of people. That's what Rocky Mountain Surge is about, about. I beg you to support them in this effort.
Thank you, Mr. Is there anyone, anyone else like to speak in support of this?
I would. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
My name is Maggie Nielsen. Mayor Graham, and dear City Council members. As a volunteer, working at Rocky Mountain Surge Food Pantry, I meet people of all walks of life from all over the world. We assist not only native Puebloans, but also those who have joined our community from many countries, including Poland, Ukraine, Brazil, Afghanistan, and the Philippines, just to name a few. I have enjoyed learning greetings from their homelands to make them feel more comfortable. We also have a guest who is hearing impaired. I'm blessed to know American Sign Language to offer support. This experience has enriched my life and helped me make connections with so many people who become precious friends. We all need each other. We all need food. In this moment, with your kindness, help us to continue to be generous, to ease a hunger and soothe a spirit. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else which wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Hello?
Hi. Hello, everybody. Thank you guys for having me. My name is Trimo Richardson. Uh, I represent the Southern Colorado Phenoms. We're the youth club basketball organization. Honestly, it wasn't for RMSCR. Brandy, she offered us an opportunity for our club basketball team to host our practices. Wasn't for her, we wouldn't have the opportunity to have a lot of these youth boys uh, expanding now into youth girls uh, here in our local area. Learning the sport of basketball, to not only learn how to better improve their skills of the game, but to really learn characteristics from their coaches and um, leadership and to really give back into the community, starting youth. I know earlier you guys talked about um, empowering not only the older people, but younger, the youth to really uh, make a bigger impact in our city. And I think it's also really important for us to do that. Um, you know, and wasn't for RMSCR, they, they gave us a, they gave us a place to really host our practices and really understand what it's like to really combine as a, contribute as a community. Uh, my youth group has about thirty boys uh, expanding. Uh, so starting there, we're only growing. Uh, starting there, if you support us a lot, um, you could really make a bigger impact, not only just the, what everybody else has been saying before me, but our youth especially. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Hello again. I would like to share with you a couple of experiences that I've had with Rocky Mountain Surge. Rocky Mountain Surge, with our five oh one C three Southern Colorado Association for Restorative Justice, they have been able to allow us, they've hosted us so that we can have our meetings there. And they have given us a lot of um, opportunity to bring individuals who need assistance to their facility so that they could get groceries, so that they could get diapers, so that they could get the assistance that they need. This is an organization that I think is absolutely imperative to the health of our community. These are some of the programs that I really want to support here. They've had art therapy classes that were made available there. They have had bike giveaways. They have had tremendous um, resources made available to the community. And Brandy Atticay serves on many different nonprofits, at least one. I don't know how many others that she serves on here, but a very important nonprofit here in uh, Pueblo. And she has uh, made sure that she is making herself available to the community, not only to community leaders, but to those who need her assistance the most. Um, I will share this with you, and I hope that the judge doesn't mind that I'm sharing this. I asked Dennis Mays to go on a tour over there, and he called me after he had gone on that tour, and he was extremely impressed and very, very happy that those resources existed. So I encourage you, please, support this worthy, very worthy organization. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I would like to speak.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance?
I would.
It's not time yet.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
You have, you have to wait till it's done.
Okay.
Was there anybody else in favor? Hello?
Hi there. Good evening. My name is Monica Martinez, and my husband, um, Mark and I just recently opened a business housed in Rocky Mountain Surge Building. Uh, we started Jace's Place, and it's been almost a year. Uh, I think it'd be a year like in March, um, but we officially opened October. Um, our mission is to mentor young kids um, in social skill development. Um, provide that mentorship aspect to them and also teach basic, basic life skills. We, obviously, it started out as a dream, um, and we just wanted to do everything. Um, I work with kids with special needs. I have for the last little over a decade now. And I know the lack of resources we have. That's all we want to do is be another resource, but I wanted to do everything, absolutely everything. Um. Came, uh, my husband reeled me in a little, uh, reminded me I can't do everything, but we could do something. When we came upon, um, I met Brandy through a friend. She gave us a tour through the building, and it was just a hidden gym. Everything we wanted to do, healthy cooking, we can do cooking classes. They had the ability to, um, our kids will have the ability to gain those, those skills through cooking. Um, we have a gym. One of my number one things is get moving. Let's get our kids moving, and we had the open space for a gym. We had just everything at our fingertips. Um, the food pantry, didn't even know it existed until I walked through there. It's amazing, though. Um, we just hope that, and right now we only have a handful of kids. Um, we know we're gonna grow. And we really um, just need so much more support from the community. Um, monetarily of just need so much more support from the community monetarily, of course, you know, volunteers, things like that, but just helping us grow that place because it's such a unique piece of, unique building and historical, historical building. I wish that it could just be very well populated. That's one thing I really want to see is the playground. I want to see just people there, kids there being helped. The resources there are just unlimited and unbelievable. So I won't take any more of your time, but please, you know, just I hope that you help sell. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Hello.
How you doing?
Good.
Good evening, everybody. I'll make this quick because I don't like a lot of words, but I've
Can I get your name for the record?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I meant to do that too. Mark Martinez. I'm also, that's my wife that just spoke, part of Jace's Place, co-founder. I've worked thirty-five years in construction. I've worked with Catholic charities for a number of years. I work for the Housing Authority currently. So I've seen a lot of things that Pueblo has, good and bad on both sides. Love this community. It is the best community in the world. I want to speak on behalf of the Pueblo Bikers United, part of it. When we didn't have a place to distribute to our twenty-five agencies that we help every year, along with the fire department, first responders and the police department, they all, they all come together to help us there. Who came up and stepped up to provide us a place to distribute our goods to all the needy families during Christmas was Rocky Mountain Ser and Brandy Adichai. She spearheaded that and she made it happen instantly. It's huge, guys. God know this place has an amazing impact on our community. Thank you for your time. God bless.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Hello to you.
My name is James Larson and I've been there a very short, short time. We get trucks in on Tuesday and we help the community like everybody else has said. And we, we set it up like a grocery store, basically. You go in there, you pick whatever, one item off each shelf unless otherwise said. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone who'd like to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor Latino.
Do I get to say something now? It's, it's, this organization is unbelievable. I've spent some time there. And there's a lot of memory in that place for me because of what went on there. I went to school there, played ball there. And that gymnasium, when I see these young people in there and I go and see what's going on, it's, it's just warms my heart and I see the, the good nuns from the Sisters of Charity and, and those folks, they're smiling because good things are happening for young people and for the people in this community. So I love you. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Latino. Counselor Maestri?
I'm a little less emotional, I'm sorry, because I just sat here and was chastised for not doing enough for this community, not having enough funds and resources for the community. And I know that this is duplicated services. We duplicate services all over. We have Care and Share. We have the Pueblo Food Project. We have Pope, Pueblo United. There's all of these different. And this grant is specifically for another food pantry or to, to improve their food pantry, to include their kitchen, which we've just invested in El Quinto de Sol through the million dollar ARPA grant that came out of our city funds to do a food kitchen over there. And that's what I mean by, you know, we're, we're all heroes when we're giving resources, but duplicated resources mean additional administration fees. So then you take the pot and you start depleting it. When you start depleting all of these additional administration fees that you pay, that each one of the, the organizations charge in order to administer the funds in order to get things done. And so, you know, I just, you know, I want the community to really look at the whole big picture of what goes on here. I know that the ARPA funds could cover some wastewater issues that we're having here in our community and, and Mr. Gomez's community and my community. And I'm sure that there's other districts within our community that those ARPA funds can cover. And I'm sorry, I'm not so, you know, fun when it comes to all this, but in order to, how are we ever gonna have enough resources if we just keep depleting, duplicating resources? And so forth. So I'm, I'm not going to be voting for it tonight. I'm hoping that we're going to be able to look at the remaining ARPA dollars and look at some wastewater improvements for some of the neighborhoods that are depleting because that is, you know, what council is set up to do is to, is to improve the city, to maintain it, to provide new infrastructure and so forth. And so I won't be voting for that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Martinez?
You know, I think that I, that the woman's testimony was so incredibly powerful and I want to, I want to thank you for coming to speak tonight because when we're talking about food deserts and people not having access to cars or transportation, they can't drive over to the east side and access the grocery store. They can't just drive, they, they don't afford, they don't have that luxury to, you know, work three jobs and at the end of the day, the buses are stopped running and get to, get to have healthy food for their family. And so this is not duplicative at all. This is a food pantry on District Four, which is a food desert. And the people in District Four deserve healthy foods for their families. And so I want to note for the record that this is, I don't think that this is duplicating services at all. This is specifically for District Four, in District Four, not specifically for District Four residents, but people who need to walk, people at the end of the day who work three jobs and work their butts off to get access to food. It's, I, I genuinely hope that we can all, the majority of us can pass this tonight. Please.
Counselor Flores?
Yes. I, I didn't think this would be difficult at all because I, I know the kind of work that Brandy does. But today I spoke with Deja Shaw. She is the director in Pueblo of Care and Share. And she paid you a big compliment today and I didn't even ask for it, but the model is not duplicated at all. The way Care and Share distributes food is that they need, in fact, they have over forty sites in the city of Pueblo to make sure that every corner of the city is provided food. And this food is free of charge. They charge nobody. They don't ask any questions. It's, it's, and she paid you the highest compliment, Randy, that she thought you were one of the, the best at what you're doing. And I'm happy to support you, but in no way are you trying to create something new. You're simply trying to provide food to people in your area that really need it. And I'm happy to support you.
Thank you. Counselor Gomez?
Well, there's some good news in Bessemer anyway. They're gonna, I visited the Soco Harm Reduction Association program. There's a fourteen thousand square foot building that they're renovating and they're gonna have a pretty good sized grocery store in there. So my hat's off to them for doing that. If you don't know, they're also gonna have a satellite library there as well. So there's some good stuff going on in Bessemer. I just wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I have a question on the ARPA funds. The money, this ARPA request is separate from what can be used on infrastructure, correct?
Yeah, so this is, this is the bigger pool of ARPA funds that can be used for some, for some infrastructure projects like broadband, wastewater. What's the third?
It's left me. It's too late. I don't remember the third one off the top of my head.
It, it can, it can be used for certain, for certain infrastructure projects.
I guess the big question here is, is can you have too many pantries or can you have too many? I mean, we were just talking about this earlier tonight. Is there? We are a community that is like many communities with tremendous needs. And every corner of our city has needs. It's too bad that we don't have a community center like that Seaton High School in every corner of the, the city that is providing services to the people who are struggling and struggling mightily to, to make things happen. I like the eclectic part of this, this, this center because, you know, we're hearing basketball, cooking, all these other, it, it's literally open to everybody and it's not a, a pigeonhole. All you can go there and do is pick up some oranges. You can actually go there and learn a lot of things and, and and make some good things happen. And, and you know, these ARPA funds were specifically designed and sent to the community for projects like this. I mean, I think that something that helps the community in this way is very, very important. And is there any other questions? Comments? I'll call for the question.
Mark Aliff?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez? Joe Latino?
Yes.
Regina Maestri? Sarah Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes four two.
Regina, you need to declare it.
Request. Yeah.
I'm going to be recusing myself from the rest remainder of the meeting. Thank you.
Okay. We'll wait till Counselor Maestri leaves the meeting. Yeah. Am I dreaming? Yeah, you're gonna get your stormwater. Madam Clerk, guess one?
Item S one, a resolution awarding construction contract amount of twenty-five thousand seven hundred and seven dollars to color our front range roofing for project number twenty-three dash one six two. Replace roof membrane on Pope block building generator room, setting forth four thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars for contingencies and authorizing the purchasing agent to execute same.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Hayes, we have a staff report.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council. The resolution before you awards a construction contract to Colorado Front Range Roofing in the amount of twenty-five thousand seven hundred and seven dollars to replace the roof membrane on the Pope block building generator room. The roof membrane on the generator room structure is deteriorated to the point where there's roof leaks. We also have a couple of other projects that are going on as well on the, on the Pope block building coming up here soon. But these funds were set aside by an ordinance by previous council. This is just the culmination of that in the award of this contract. That, I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Is there a motion to approve? Have a motion and a second. Any questions? Let's call for the action.
Mark Aliff?
Skew, one second. You're raising your hand. This is a resolution, not an ordinance.
So
Did you sign up?
Yeah, there was, I'm afraid that there was no signup sheet for this one. We did miss that.
There was no?
There was no signup sheet that was.
Okay, I'll allow you to come up. Are you for or against it?
Okay, and I was already said my name earlier. Why I'm against this is because it was talked about during the work retreat that you guys are potentially looking at the Pope block building to potentially have an office or offices there or what have you with staff, all of that. When there's not the infrastructure in there because it was talked about, you guys would have to have IDs to badge in, security reasons, et cetera, et cetera. And we had other bids. It's always appropriate to go with the lowest bid. And do council members look through everybody that puts the bids in, whether it's four companies, five companies, six companies? And go through Yelp results and everything and see their credit with the BBB and all of the comments that people put on there, whether they're good comments or bad comments right here because I see the next one was Dury Brothers Roofing. Their bid was thirty-six thousand six hundred and fifty-eight right here. I don't know the process. If you guys look at all of these bids because they're online, I look at the bids or if you guys call these people and see if they could bid lower on them and everything because how I said prior, last month or month and a half ago, when they were awarded a different contract and everything, I spoke against it. Because there are other bids. You're not always wanting to go with the lowest bidder. So if you have a, something wrong with your car, transmission goes out, are you gonna go to the lowest bidder? Probably not. Probably so. And if you do go with the lowest bidder, you're probably gonna look at reviews on that business website to see how customer service is, even if it's the cheapest. I have a mechanic. Is he the lowest? No, he's not. Is he the most expensive? No, he's not. But I've known him for well over a decade and he does pretty darn good work. Another thing is when any council member recuses themselves, he or she does not state the reason why. I think that should also be entered into the record. So the people that aren't as informed as I am know the reason why he or she recuses his or herself during said motions like this. And also a potential question for Ms. Exa, she's able to respond. What is the consequence or punishment if a council member ever votes on something that they should have recused themselves with when they take the oath of office? Thank you.
Welcome. Since I opened it up, did anybody else not get to sign up that wanted to speak one way or the other on this? Okay, saying none. I need, did we get a motion to approve? Huh?
We did.
We did? Any comments or questions? I will say this, in our, in our packet, when it's posted online, the letter from the Attorney General and the, the reason that a person recuses himself is online as part of your, as part of our, as part of our council packet, which you have total access to at pueblo.us, council agenda. Just scroll down and you can see the, see the whole thing. Any other questions? I'll call for the question.
Mark Aliff?
Yes.
Dennis Flores?
Yes.
Roger Gomez?
Yes.
Joe Latino?
Yes.
Sarah Martinez? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Thank you. Ms. Stoller, mayor, or a general?
I'm not leaving.
You can stay.
I'm staying right here.
Are you sleeping here tonight?
Yep.